Ladies and gentlemen, I'd love to call this public hearing to order. It is 9:04. Special meeting, public hearing to order. It's 9:04. Today, actually, is the first day of the fiscal year for the City of Tallahassee. Once again, congratulations to our budget team for putting together an incredible budget for this fiscal year, 2026. This is a great meeting. First of all, I want to welcome all of our distinguished guests that are here. I want you to know that we recognize that you have been working on this in the past for many, many, many years to get us to this point. Looking forward to the presentations and moving forward. First and foremost, I'm the internal management manager for introductions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is indeed a special meeting. This meeting was called after receiving a letter from CEO of TMH Mark O'Brien, FSU President McCullough, September 16th, announcing the execution of the MOU that will create Tallahassee Memorial Healthcare TMH academic health center. Something that we've talked about for how many months, that they have talked about for many years, how we see it coming to fruition. And before you today, we have a panel of experts, including President Mark O'Brien, that will share the details of the MOU. And then be followed by city commission discussion. Finally, as you've indicated, all the people in the public community here. There has been so much discussion of this. I think this is a great meeting to have all of the experts, so many hours working on this, and putting the details together. I think we all understand that the details are hard sometimes, but we have a very extensive MOU that's at your disposal here, that team has worked on, will walk through it. I know we're more than capable of answering questions and looking for information from the commission and the public. With that...
With that, Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Speaking without the microphone, but I think I could be heard. With that, we're looking forward to their presentation. I know we have opening comments, Mr. Mayor, from Mark, as well as President McCullough, to begin the presentation, followed by a detailed, in-depth dive into the material. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you, and we're looking forward to the meeting.
Sounds great. And President McCullough, Mark O'Brien, it's great to see you all. Welcome back in chambers. If you will also take a second to introduce your team that is sitting with us at the table, that'd be great. Mark, we'll start with you.
Mark O'Brien, you know me from Tallahassee Memorial Healthcare. To my left, immediate left, is Priscilla Needham. She's our chief financial officer. Next to her is Dr. Dean Watson. He is our chief integration officer over our physician management programs.
Excellent. President McCullough?
Yes, hi. I'm Rick McCullough. I'm president for Florida State University. My right is senior vice president for finance administration, Kyle Clark. And that is the vice president for research, Dr. Stacy Patterson.
Excellent. Wonderful. Well, let's go ahead and jump right in.
Mr. Mayor.
Can I please? Okay. Hold on just a second. Mayor pro tem, and then we'll come down to the commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, we have with us representing President Marvin Johnson from Florida A&amp;M University, government relations, Michelle Robinson. And we also have the executive vice president, I don't know all your title, Dr. Palm. And as a point of personal privilege, I would ask if Dr. Palm could take this vacant seat that we have at the table, if that's okay with you.
Dr. Palm is going to be the first to present, if you don't mind, under the public hearing. And then when we get into the questions... No, Dr. Palm, after we have the formal presentation, you'll be the first to present. And we're going to have the discussion, though, with Florida State and TMH.
Absolutely.
And then we'll go from there.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Will commissioners have the opportunity for discussion after the public hearing?
Sure.
Okay. Just the way it's listed on the agenda, it says commissioner discussion, and then public hearing, and then adjourned. I just wanted to make sure.
No. What I intend to do is have the presentations, have an opportunity for us to ask any clarifying questions, have the public hearing, listen to the public, and then come back for a full discussion.
Okay.
Not only amongst us, but I'm sure there'll be technical questions as well amongst...
Okay, great. Thank you.
Those that are here. Turn it over to you, Mr. Brian.
All right. I'll sit. On or not?
It's on. You're good. It's the red light.
Thank you. I think this is old news. We all hear it from me all the time. One of the things that we recognize is that when we talk about the quality of life of any community, quality health is one of those foundational components. You can't have a high quality of life without having a high quality of health. And it's been something that we've been focused on at TMH because we are the center point for that in this region. What we also recognize is that healthcare is changing, is changing rapidly, always has. And either you can be a victim of the change, or you can direct change. Recognizing that, we realized that in order for us to basically help shape the change, we needed to have a clear direction. And we elected to do that through the academic health partnership model. This is not anything new. This goes back, at least formally, to 2008, even prior to that. But in 2008, we put it on our strategic plan. And have been working with FSU, in partnership with FSU, to advance programs all through those years. In 2021, we actually created, in concert with FSU, a detailed academic health model strategic plan, which has been largely the format that's been driving these conversations over these last couple of years. I will tell you, this has been a journey, and it's always going to be a journey. It's been an interesting journey, especially over these last few months. But what we're focused on is the outcome. And the outcome that we're trying to achieve is a better platform of healthcare, one that allows us to bring higher level of programs into the community. With that, it requires populations. You can't create major programs with a small population, so that's the reason why we've been expanding. It requires dollars. It requires academic partnerships. It requires research, all those things to elevate us. And this is why this partnership has been so important to our journey at TMH for all these years. It is a true partnership that will elevate the level of care here. It will be very good for TMH. It will be very good for FSU. But the most important population where it will provide value is the people we serve, the patients we serve. And not just in this region, but a very broad region. It also is good for our economy because it brings services to our community that will not only benefit those here, but it will draw people in from a large, large population. Academic health centers pull in patients from hundreds of miles, and that's what we intend on doing. And really, redefining Tallahassee as a center of health. We are already largely that in our region, and maybe even a super-regional perspective. But we want to create that on a southeast and a national platform. And we think that this partnership brings the best of both worlds, community focus and a partnership with a high academic community to really advance care across this region. And with that, let me turn it over to President McCullough to say a few words, and then we'll let the team take the presentation.
Sounds great. President McCullough?
Morning, Mayor Daley.
Morning.
City manager, commissioners, it's good to see you all, neighbors, everyone here. It's really, thank you very much for giving me a chance to speak. But I've been in academics for a really long time. And I grew up in, under the imperative that universities play a huge role in partnering with the city and the region. And we in Florida, at Florida State University, it's part of our strategic mission to partner with this area and do everything we can to make this the best area that it can be. That's a simple mission for us. And part of that, as Mark has said, is to think about healthcare. We would like to do everything we can to partner with TMH, which we're doing, to bring even better healthcare to this region. Everybody deserves it, and we are dedicated to doing that. And so that's what this is about today, is about bringing better healthcare, even better healthcare, to the region. I always like to say that my doctors, I'm very privileged, I have very good doctors in this city. They're as good as the ones I had in Boston. There's no doubt about it. But not everybody has access to doctors at that same level, and we want to help to make that happen. And so that's very important to me personally. As someone who grew up, I grew up poor. You know, if I had a toothache, I had to like just, you know, put some amoxicillin on it or whatever until it needed to be pulled because my parents really couldn't afford to take me to get healthcare. That's the way I grew up. So it's personal to me to do what's best for this city and this region. I'm very, I'm thrilled that TMH and FSU have been talking for a long time, and they have a strategic plan to bring these things together, to bring the healthcare that TMH has and the great doctors that we have, but also bring the power of Florida State, where we have all these great, you know, students and interns and nurses and all these people that study, that we can partner even stronger together and do what we can to make this even better. An academic health center is something I'm very used to. I've lived in two cities, the last two cities I lived in had academic health centers, and the healthcare is very good, very good there. What's great about this partnership is that Tallahassee Memorial Hospital is a community hospital, and we tend to keep it a community hospital. We tend to make sure that indigent care continues and gets even better. I want to underline that. This is, we're not taking any indigent care away in this partnership. This is about expanding what we do. We also think that there's a great opportunity to connect healthcare, the business, engineering, the sciences, and help to usher in the kind of innovation that brings new healthcare opportunities to this region. We understand that, you know, we can't always do everything, but we could probably do more so that some people don't have to leave this area to go get healthcare in another region. This partnership is not just about us, though. It's about the community. It's about our partners, AMU. It's about TSC. It's about the same things that have always been going on with TMH and us. We partner with all those people. They have four or five major, at AMU, it's four or five major programs at TMH already. So it's not like, you know, there's anything that's going to change. We want to enhance those programs. I talked to President Johnson yesterday. We have a great understanding of where we are together, and we are completely aligned on what we're going to do together. This has been complicated, you know, nothing's easy work doing, I guess they say, but we are in full alignment with each other, and we're really looking forward to taking this to the next level. I want to thank Mark O'Brien for his leadership and his team. They've been fantastic to work with. Stacy Patterson has been wonderful, and Kyle Clark have helped to lead this on our side. But appreciate all that you do. And of course, Dean Watson and Priscilla Needham, appreciate all that you've done. So thank you for your support. I think this is a, this is an important next step, from my point of view, and could be transformative for the region. So I look forward to discussion, and I'm going to be very happy to answer anything and everything that you want us to do.
Okay. How are we moving forward with the presentation?
Mr. Mayor, I think at this point, we'll turn it over to the team, the FSU-TMH team. They have a PowerPoint presentation. It is not totally lengthy, but, you know, lengthy with details. And it's going to share kind of the workings of the MOU, how it would work, the, you know, ultimately how it fits together. And so they're ready for that presentation, Mr. Mayor. I believe Kyle Clark will lead that.
Sounds good. And before we get started, go ahead and lay down, what are the expectations coming out of a public hearing today, the special meeting, public hearing, leading into the other action that we're going to take?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your agenda material, as you know, there's always an action to take. The action requested is to, for the city commission, to set a public hearing for October 22nd. That would be noticed, as we would generally notice public hearings, in addition to being noticed in the newspaper. So that's the action that we're requesting. I will also tell you, as we walk through this MOU, we know the relationship is between FSU and TMH. The MOU sets that framework of how this academic health center will move forward. The relationship to the city, as I think we all know at this point, with much discussion, is that the city is the title holder to the assets of the main campus by way of a very long lease agreement. And so in the MOU, it sets the expectation that the city would transfer those assets to FSU as part of this new structure and arrangement. With that, I believe it would be appropriate, with the city commission's direction, to give direction to me and my staff to work with FSU to kind of put in place that framework that you could act upon if you wanted to certainly consider and discuss at the October 22nd public hearing. That way, it could be made available to the public. There could be discussion about that, and that continues the progress of this new arrangement. So, Mr. Mayor, we would ask that you set a public hearing on October 22nd, and then I would ask that the city commission give direction for me and my staff to work with FSU to establish an MOU for that transfer of assets.
All right. Excellent. Sounds good. To the teams. Vice President Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, commissioners, city administration, neighbors, and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about a step that can strengthen healthcare, education, and economic growth in Tallahassee. Tallahassee is a community defined by connection. It's where families put down roots, where students grow into leaders, and where neighbors look out for one another. As leaders of Florida State University and Tallahassee Memorial Healthcare, we share a commitment to this city and its people. That's why we're proud to be here today to discuss this new agreement that unites our institutions and communities in creating an academic health center that will shape the future of healthcare in North Florida. We know that there is much work that needs to be done ahead to bring this vision to reality. But the foundation is solid, the trust between our institutions is strong, and our united vision is clear. The creation of a world-class academic health center in Tallahassee will set a new standard of healthcare excellence in Tallahassee, the Big Bend region, and the state.
Good morning, everybody. As a physician, I've been a physician in the Tallahassee area since 1995. It's an honor to sit here in front of you all. It's new to me, to be a patient. And I appreciate, it's just an honor to be here, and I hope you find all this information very helpful. So academic health centers serve as an ecosystem for healthcare services, access, research, and innovation. Across the country, academic health centers have proven their value in driving health outcomes in the communities they serve. They bring new treatments, clinical trials, and cutting-edge therapies, and enhanced collaboration across academia, healthcare, and community stakeholders. And when you look at Leon County specifically, the data paints a clear picture. When we compare ourselves to other counties, other counties that have academic health centers like Alachua, Hillsborough, and Miami-Dade, Leon County has fewer medical doctors, nurse practitioners, and physician assistants available to care for residents. For instance, Alachua has more than 725 medical doctors per 100,000. In Leon County, we have approximately 276 doctors per 100,000. That shortage impacts everything from access to routine checkups to specialized care. What we're trying to create here is it will help us drive innovation by moving new therapies and clinical trials more quickly to patients. Life expectancy in regions with academic health centers are often higher, which demonstrates a higher quality of life for the communities that we serve. These challenges point to why the FSU-TMH Health Academic Health Center is so important and can close these gaps, strengthen care, give our community the same advantages other parts of Florida already have.
So thank you for the opportunity to be here. Importantly, academic health centers also provide expanded training opportunities for healthcare workers who are ready to practice. Notably, approximately 75% to 80% of physicians practice where they train. That means where they completed their residency or fellowship programs. This is especially important at a time when the state of Florida faces significant physician shortages that is expected to grow to 36,000 physicians by 2035, according to the Association of American Colleges of Medicine, or the AAMC. As we work together to grow our residency programs and fellowship programs, we're not only helping to serve patients in Tallahassee, but ensuring that we can support the growing healthcare needs of our community for the future. Additionally, a recent study shows teaching physicians have a greater overall job satisfaction, meaning that we can retain them and keep the best and brightest here. They have approximately 25% lower rates of burnout compared to non-teaching physicians. But it's not just about the physicians. In 2021, a Florida Hospital Association report found that the state would face a shortage of up to 60,000 nursing professionals doing, due to its aging population and population growth. This partnership represents new opportunities for FSU graduates, for Florida A&amp;M University graduates, and Tallahassee State College graduates who come to Tallahassee to receive their education, to stay right here and build a distinguished and rewarding career. Important to this commission, the economic impact of AHCs are also real. Nationally, according to the AAMC, medical schools and teaching hospitals contribute approximately 3.2% to the US GDP, supporting 7.1 million jobs and 3 million jobs, direct jobs, with an average annual wage of $77,455. In short, an AHC, an academic health center, will drive jobs, attract investment, and help fuel the long-term growth that this region needs.
For Tallahassee, the FSU-TMH partnership means families will gradually have access to more specialized care closer to home. We'll be better positioned to keep doctors, nurses, other health professionals, and healthcare researchers here instead of losing them to other areas. The affiliation between Florida State and TMH is built on shared goals. Those include establishing a first-class academic health center in North Florida, expanding access to advanced care over time, training and retaining physicians, nurses, and health professionals, strengthening education, research, and innovation in Tallahassee and across the North Florida region. By strengthening TMH's positions, we safeguard against acquisition by a for-profit health system and ensure our patients continue to benefit from care delivered by a community-based not-for-profit health system. FSU Health is already paying dividends on the recruiting front. We are already seeing people applying, anything from physicians to our frontline staff, applying and asking and excited about FSU Health and what that means for them as professionals, as well as what it means for our community.
Now, we'll get into some of the nuts and bolts of the agreement, and during the next few slides, we will provide you all a high-level overview of the major points of the MOU that has recently been executed. So here's how it works. The city would transfer the TMH hospital campus, that's approximately 70 acres and 2 million square feet of facilities, to Florida State University. FSU, then in turn, would lease the campus back to TMH under a new lease that would be for 40 years, and the amount would be consistent, the dollar per year, as the current lease that TMH enjoys with the city. TMH will continue as a licensed independent operator, continuing to serve patients just as it always has. The hospital will be rebranded as FSU Health, and governance will be structured through a 17-member board with directors that are nominated by both TMH and Florida State University.
This governance model balances independence with collaboration. The TMH board will have 17 voting members, nine nominated by TMH and eight nominated by FSU. Directors are nominated, and once appointed, they have a fiduciary duty to TMH Incorporated and the patients and community the hospital serves. TMH remains, retains majority representation operational control. At the same time, major decisions like capital projects requires a supermajority. That high threshold ensures that decisions reflect broad consensus, not one side alone. This structure protects TMH's independence while giving FSU a meaningful role in shaping the future of healthcare in Tallahassee and the region.
From an operational standpoint, nothing changes for patients who stay. TMH continues to employ all of its staff. Arrangements with clinicians will not change. It remains a nonprofit, tax-exempt organization. TMH covers all operating maintenance and repair costs to keep facilities in good condition. As we've mentioned previously, Tallahassee is a community defined by connection. Both organizations are pleased to be a part of so many student and families' lives. That spirit of connection is reflected in this agreement, ongoing commitment to caring for all patients, including those with and without insurance. TMH's charity care policy continues unchanged. Patients keep their doctors. Our partnerships with AMU and Tallahassee State College and others will continue, and they will grow by opening new doors for students and strengthening the health workforce. As mentioned previously of some of the programs, I'll list out just a few, and this is just a few of the many. Restory therapy, pharmacy, PT, OT, nursing clinicals with Florida A&amp;M University. We have agreements in place for surgical tech programs and nursing with TSC and nursing clinicals with Pfizer that are still in existence and doing very well. Importantly, decision-making authority stays right here in Tallahassee. Both FSU and TMH have deep roots in this community, and this affiliation strengthens that local commitment. The hospital remains locally based, community-focused, and dedicated to serving every neighbor, with additional resources of a major public university, including potential funding resources that enhance our ability to preserve and expand the community-based healthcare programs, which are critical to the shared mission.
So under the new agreement, under the new 40-year agreement, TMH will carry the FSU Health name. Co-branding with TMH of the hospital will be in place for at least 10 years. This plan acknowledges the expanded partnership, and it also honors TMH's long legacy in our community. FSU will maintain oversight over the FSU Health brand to ensure it represents the quality that we expect and builds community trust. This agreement also creates opportunities to broadly expand health-related education and training programs, including the addition of new residency and fellowship programs. While FSU has been an institutional sponsor of residency programs at TMH since 2010, beginning with internal medicine and then moving to general surgery, more programs are needed. FSU, in partnership with the Appalachian Center and TMH, just introduced a new psychiatry residency program last year that, in its maturity, will bring 16 psychiatry residents at any one time. And we officially, just this summer, partnered with TMH to establish official sponsorship of the longstanding family medicine residency program that will be housed in our new FSU Health Research Facility on the TMH campus. The importance of growing these, it's important that we grow these programs, but more important that we make this area an area of distinction and opportunity for recruitment of top candidates who will fill these coveted spots. As mentioned earlier, 75% to 80% of residents and fellows stay and practice where they train. And FSU has set aggressive goals to not only expand our programs across Florida, but also ensure a quality experience that helps retain the top prospects right here in Tallahassee. Academic health centers bring, also bring new treatments, clinical trials, and cutting-edge therapies directly to the patients. The focus on research through this partnership will mean more direct collaborations between scientists and clinicians, leading to faster connection of the discoveries from the lab being able to be applied at the bedside, allowing our research community to ask community-relevant questions, and moving innovation specifically guided for the unique needs of Tallahassee. FSU Health Academic Research Center is a $134 million project, thanks to the support of the state of Florida, is already under construction on the TMH campus, and will provide the types of specialized space needed to attract cutting-edge clinical research talent and immersive training programs. It will also house the new FSU-hosted family medicine residency practice that sees 10,000 to 12,000 patients per year, providing more direct support and participation opportunities for those patients. To ensure that our strategies are meeting regional needs and goals, our focus will be to collaboratively develop initiatives and programs that address regional needs. For example, we've already started discussions about establishing joint committees of subject matter experts from around our community at other... experts from around our community at other institutions beyond the two, FSU and TMH, to conduct a comprehensive analysis of our collective resources and to build on an actionable roadmap for improving healthcare. New opportunities will also exist for clinicians interested in competing for research contracts and grants. FSU has the infrastructure needed to support and oversee these efforts. And finally, it should be noted that opportunities will extend well beyond medicine and nursing. As we've been developing our vision for FSU Health, there are truly opportunities for everyone. Professionals in business, IT, engineering, social work, the arts, and so many other disciplines will be part of the development of a true academic health center in our city. AHCs are powerful economic engines for the communities that they serve. It's not just about the direct impact, but also the indirect impact that an AHC has on its community that's important. According to the AAMC, AHCs provide significant new business spending, as the academic health centers tend to purchase locally and serve the constituents that it serves in other ways. Additionally, community spending due to job creation and growth, on an average, every job in an academic health center generates 1.36 jobs in a local community. And $1.10 of indirect salaries, wages, and benefits in the community are also realized for every $1 of the academic health center labor spending. Additionally, academic health centers often serve as innovation hubs, and this is a real focus that President McCullough has brought to FSU, as they catalyze and attract new businesses, including biotech and other healthcare support businesses that contribute to creating a thriving economic future. We see that opportunity here in Tallahassee. We have all the pieces, but we need to bring the resources together in new ways to realize our full potential.
I know that y'all are going to be surprised that I'm going to talk about the financial aspects.
Show us the money count.
I know. Dr. Watson really wanted to do it, but I told him, "I got it." And there are additional strengths. The agreement also gives TMH access to a conduit issuer for tax-exempt debt, while removing that liability for the city. The city currently is the conduit issuer for tax-exempt debt for TMH, and FSU would supplement that moving forward. FSU holds one of the strongest credit ratings out of any public institution in the United States. In fact, there are only seven institutions in the country that have a higher-rated credit, public institutions in the country, that have a higher-rated credit than FSU. FSU is rated as a AA+ institution by Standard &amp; Poor's and Bitch, and we're in very elite company. This adds stability to the partnership. Together, those financial tools make it possible to expand services, attract investment, and support long-term growth in Tallahassee. Just last week, Moody's Rating completed a review of TMH and noted that this agreement has the potential for substantial positive impact on the health system over the long term. They pointed to past collaborations between FSU and TMH as proof that this model already works. We have spent thousands of hours working on this agreement, allowing both organizations to thrive and bring out each other's strengths. I'm not sure there's any bigger or better endorsement than an independent organization like Moody's, with their stature and credibility, to recognize the same positive benefits that we worked tirelessly on that brought us to the MOU of today.
FSU and TMH are coming together to launch FSU Health, a new academic health center that will transform care in North Florida. This agreement preserves TMH's community mission and independence, ensuring it remains a locally-led hospital. It will expand access to advanced care, so families across the region won't need to travel as far for specialized services. The partnership also strengthens education, research, and workforce training by preparing the next generation of doctors, nurses, scientists, and health professionals right here in Tallahassee. Together, we will fuel jobs, innovation, and long-term economic growth. The agreement deepens our collaboration with FAMU and TSC and broadens the pipeline for students across health disciplines and beyond. And importantly, this partnership does not change TMH's commitment to caring for the community's most vulnerable population. Patients will continue to receive care regardless of their ability to pay. This is a true partnership, the university, the hospital, and the city working together to benefit the community. The university advances education, the hospital strengthens care delivery, and the city gains from new opportunities and growth.
Mr. -- this partnership is about the future of our city and the North Florida region. It's about making families, making sure families can receive advanced care here at home, rather than having to go to Jacksonville, Gainesville, or beyond. It's about giving students a reason to stay and build their lives right here in Tallahassee. Together, FSU and TMH can create an academic health center that preserves TMH's legacy, grows our community, supports the health of our neighbors, and strengthens the Tallahassee community for decades to come. We are grateful to the many partners, the local leaders, elected officials, physicians, doctors, nurses, researchers, and community members whose support has brought us to this point. We respectfully ask for your support in making this vision a reality. That concludes our presentation.
Wonderful job. Okay, since the relationship with FAMU was referenced several times, I think it's appropriate. Vice President Palm, thanks for joining us. We received very positive communications from the president yesterday, supporting this merger moving forward and recognizing how it strengthens the relationship. But I think it's appropriate for you to go ahead on behalf of FAMU. And by the way, do we have a representative from Tallahassee State College with us? Yeah, Vice President Palm, thanks for joining us.
Thank you. So, good morning, Mayor Daley, Commissioners, Dr. McCullough, CEO Mark O'Brien, and the wonderful staff and team members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of Florida A&amp;M University, and also an invitation to have a seat at the table. We are aware that our nation is facing a critical shortage of healthcare professionals. The shortage affects Tallahassee directly. Patients here need care, hospitals need staff, and the workforce pipeline must be stronger. Our health system's strength depends on growing talent locally. That's why the MOU between FSU and Tallahassee Memorial Hospital is so important. But I want to emphasize, it cannot be an effort of one institution alone. FAMU, FSU, TSC must work together to build a stronger, more integrated pipeline of healthcare talent. For more than a century, FAMU's Health Sciences Enterprise, spanning the College of Pharmacy and Pharmaceutical Sciences, Institute of Public Health, the School of Nursing, and the School of Allied Health, has been a driving force in healthcare training, discovery, and service. Each year, our programs produce hundreds of licensed professionals, nurses, pharmacists, therapists, and public health leaders, who serve across Florida and the nation. Many of them stay right here in Leon County. Collectively, they work to improve health outcomes and drive population health. Our students are already embedded with TMH's clinical environment, completing essential rotations in pharmacy, nursing, physical therapy, and cardio-pulmonary science. Together, we are shaping professionals who are practice-ready, technologically skilled, and deeply connected to the communities they serve. Through expanding partnerships, we can build integrated clinical-to-career pathways, expand simulation and telehealth training, and co-design programs that meet both immediate workforce needs and a long-term system transformation. As FAMU continues towards the path to R1 Carnegie classification status, this partnership will allow additional opportunities to increase research capacity in Tallahassee, in the Big Bend area, and bring more specialty care and innovation to local healthcare systems. In short, this partnership is more than an institutional alliance between FSU, TMH, and TSC. It is a collective commitment to the future of healthcare in our state. FAMU stands ready to bring our legacy of excellence, innovation, and service to the table as we build something truly transformative together. We look forward with optimism to continued dialogue and collaboration, confident that we can create a model for academic and community partnership that others across the nation will seek to follow. Thank you.
Vice President, thank you very much. And again, please tell President Johnson how much we appreciate her collaboration on the community level. If you wouldn't mind just staying put as part of the conversation. Colleagues, what I'd love to do is give an opportunity for any clarification questions at this point before we go into public comment, and then we're going to have a robust discussion as well.
Mayor, may I introduce Dr. Michelle Robinson, the government relations representative from Florida A&amp;M University.
Yes, yes, Vice President, good to see you. Thank you. All right, any questions or clarifications on the presentation on the MOU? All right, let's get straight into the public hearing then. Mr. Clerk, all right, how many public -- first of all, this is a special meeting, public hearing. We are only dealing with the business of the potential merger into FSU Health. We are not taking non-agenda items today during this meeting.
Correct.
Okay, walk us through the process.
Mayor, we have a dozen speakers at this time. There are others who wish to speak and have not filled out a form. Those are available on the table just outside of the chambers. You can do that, and they'll bring that contact information to me. I'll call the speakers. The microphone is at the podium here in the middle, and each speaker will have three minutes for remarks. I'll give you a heads-up at 30 seconds. There is a lighted system, but it's up on the dais, and so it may be easier just to make your comments, and I'll let you know when you're at 30 seconds.
Excellent. And to our friends that are here, by the way, we try to not have, we give the public the opportunity to speak, three minutes without interruption. I ask that you take notes on some of the questions that they may have that we can answer after the fact during the discussion, but we're here to truly hear from the public. So, why don't we go ahead and begin?
Okay. Our first speaker is Dr. Shamariel Roberson. Shamariel Roberson, and then Lamonte Horn will be the second speaker.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Dr. Shamariel Roberson. I was the former Deputy Secretary for Health and the state's Chronic Disease Director during COVID. In Tallahassee and the surrounding counties, chronic diseases continuously are the leading causes of death and disability, and have been for a very long time. Three out of four adults in this region live with at least one chronic condition, and half live with two or more. Almost every family in our community, even some in this very room, are affected by chronic diseases. These are not just stats. These are our neighbors, our families, our stories. As an epidemiologist that was born, raised, and trained in this community at both institutions, both FSU and FAMU, I have sought my entire career to understand how place matters, how proximity to prevention, early detection, quality care influences entire populations. Academic health centers can significantly improve health systems to better understand why we have poor health outcomes in our area. As an advocate for rural health, I was born and raised in Madison County. I understand critical gaps in healthcare. FSU, FAMU, TSC, this community partnership brings together a better opportunity to collaborate with community-based organizations and faith-based organizations. This partnership has the potential to do more than just expand health services. It has the opportunity to build a healthier community powered by research that will improve health outcomes and further population health. By educating and retaining professionals in this area, we will strengthen the workforce and create pathways to leave this region better, better equipped for preceptships, internships, and career opportunities. And just as important, this partnership will foster community-led solutions with trusted voices that shape our community and how healthcare outcomes can improve. FSU Health and TMH have made it very clear, whether insured or uninsured, residents will receive high-quality healthcare with a board that is committed to engaging community partners while operating as a nonprofit institution. By establishing a health center in Tallahassee, residents and visitors will receive state-of-the-art care. We cannot continue to operate with a status quo, and we must ensure that every resident, regardless of zip code, has the opportunity to quality care. Together, this partnership, this new academic healthcare center, will improve healthcare for generations to come.
Our next speaker, please. Next is Lamonte Horn, and then Lee Hinkle.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Lamonte Horn. I am here as a concerned citizen of Tallahassee and Leon County. Today is the first public hearing regarding a landmark proposal, one that promises the transformative power of a quantenary academic medical center. Let me be clear. I share the vision of enhanced research, better training, and more specialized care for North Florida. I believe that partnership is progress. However, the issue I present to you is whether this commission has the sole authority to transfer a billion dollars in public assets, built and sustained by this community for generations, without the explicit consent of the public who owns it. This deal is not merely a collaboration, it is the transfer of the city's equity to a state-controlled entity under a 40-year leaseback. The proponents often cite the success of US Health as a model, but look closely at the mechanics. The UF Health model was like a university growing a healthcare system from its own seed, an internal, organic expansion of a state institution's mission. What is proposed here is fundamentally different. It is the grafting of a well-established, community-owned tree into a new academic grove. The asset changes hands, the ownership changes, the risk calculus changes. This is why democratic accountability is non-negotiable. This transfer is not an administrative decision, it is a profound act of fiscal finality. Therefore, I argue explicitly in favor of a ballot referendum to approve this merger for the following defensive reasons. One, democratic accountability. Tallahassee Memorial is a city asset. The city is the shareholder. To deny citizens the right to vote on the disposition of their most valuable public asset is to render democracy symbolic. We must not allow the urgency of a good idea to eclipse the requirement of good governance. The citizens must have the final say on the fate of their hospital. Second, fiscal responsibility. The long-term impacts on any existing community programs, like those with FAMU and Tallahassee State College, all represent profound fiscal and social obligations. The public must be able to weigh the binding contracts, the lease terms, and the non-financial costs before the deal is sealed. Third and final, the public's right to determine its own fate. This merger affects everything from charity care standards to workforce employment to the fundamental relationships between the city and the university. This is a generational decision about the soul of our community's healthcare infrastructure. In closing, Commissioners, you are tasked with great responsibility, but some responsibilities, particularly those concerned in the alienation of communal wealth, must be shared. I urge you, as the city commission, to demonstrate leadership not by making this decision yourselves, but by having the integrity to submit this final definitive agreement to the citizens, the true owners, for their vote. Let the people decide the fate of their hospital. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Lee Hinkle, followed by Joe Kaliki.
Amen to the judge for the record.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Lee Hinkle. I've had the privilege of serving with both Tallahassee Memorial and Florida State University, and I care deeply about them both. My former fellow TMH board chairs, Steve Evans, Ed Murray, Aaron Ennis, and Martin Proctor can't be here today, but they've asked me to speak with one voice. We're genuinely excited about the next phase of the FSU-TMH Academic Health Center. Done well, this partnership will grow research, open training paths that keep talent here, and potentially bring more specialty care close to home. Because we want it to succeed, we're asking for two improvements. Government that secures, governance that secures durable local stewardship, and transparency that brings the public along. Those are the foundations that turn promise into a trusted, lasting institution. First, governance. TMH is our community hospital. It must remain locally steered. As drafted, the new board gives TMH a 9-8 majority. On paper balanced, in practice too thin. A hospital serving hundreds of thousands shouldn't hinge on a single absence or a sudden shift. That margin invites instability and erodes confidence. Please establish a clear, durable local majority, one that doesn't turn on a single vote, so that care decisions stay anchored in the region's needs for the long haul. Second, transparency and timing. This is a once-in-a-generation decision. Our community deserves time to understand it. We ask that the community be provided clear answers to what people care about most. They care about continuity with current care teams, indigent care commitments, and the metrics for success: access, wait times, and outcomes. One sequencing request. Please do not transfer the asset until the final agreement is complete and public. Finalize governance and obligations first, transfer second. No partial handoffs, no placeholders. That order protects patients, staffs, donors, and partners, and shows confidence that the details match the headlines. We aren't asking for a stop, but an upgrade. Lock in local stewardship beyond nine to eight, offer a short education window, and finalize before any transfer. Do that, and we'll launch a world-class, locally-rooted academic health center that Tallahassee can celebrate for decades. Thank you for your time and your service.
Our next speaker, please.
Joe Kaliki, and then Jamie Forrest will follow.
Name and address for the record, please. Good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Joe Kaliki. For some brief context, I was born at TMH and raised here in Tallahassee. I attended both TSC and Florida State University, and now I am the Director of Product Development for Ruvo, a local health informatics company, but I'm here in a personal capacity today. It is important for me to mention, I spent most of my childhood, about 10 years of it, traveling to Shands and Gainesville because there was specialized care I could not receive here in Tallahassee. I want to plainly state that the data shows that an academic medical center will be objectively beneficial to the residents of Tallahassee. Harvard School of Public Health studies have shown that AMCs are strongly associated, as mentioned, with better health outcomes, even at unrelated medical facilities. I strongly support the eventual existence of an FSU-led AMC here in Tallahassee, not just for our everyday care, but for those like me who needed specialized care and today have to travel to Jacksonville or Gainesville. In my recent career, I've been privileged to work on our nation's most critical public health infrastructure, and I'm currently working closely with Johns Hopkins University and the World Health Organization on ways to help decision-makers make smarter choices about how we serve their communities. Good data and careful, measured strategy is required to make those decisions about the health and well-being of those they serve, not by rushing decisions because of political expediency. Your role is more than just considering those health outcomes. The city has finite assets. If the time comes to move off of those assets, even for great reasons, the maximum possible benefit for those you serve should be the aim. I reviewed dozens of transactions between university health systems and local governments, and from my research, it would be quite unprecedented for such a valuable asset to be transferred to Florida State University without specific compensation. Florida State University needs TMH for its own goals, to grow as a research university as much as we, the public, want a better health system. But once the city has relinquished that asset, it is gone for good. City of Colorado Springs went through a very similar scenario with a struggling hospital, Colorado Springs Memorial Hospital. The fate of their hospital was publicly debated for three years before deciding that the best course of action was to lease the hospital to University of Colorado Health. Proceeds from the lease created the Colorado Springs Health Foundation, which serves surrounding counties by providing grants to organizations, improving health outcomes and access. This is a potential path our city could follow if Florida State was not acquiring TMH at fair market value.
You have 30 seconds.
I urge the Commission not to simply hand over these assets only for Florida State to lease our hospital back to the community. I think it's really important that we take public comment, we think about this, because this is a monumental moment for us. I do support the overall endeavor, but I just urge you to take your time on this matter and listen to as many parties as possible. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Jamie Forrest, and then Wendy Gray. Remind speakers, if you would, give us your name and address as you start your comments.
Thank you for joining us.
Good morning, Jamie Forrest. Name and address.
Name and address.
3774 Roswell Drive. It's in 32310. My name is Jamie Forrest, and I've been a proud resident of Tallahassee for 25 years. I want to express my strong support for the MOU between FSU and TMH. Over the years, I've seen too many friends and neighbors forced to leave Tallahassee for specialty care. My best friend experienced seizures and told by a local doctor it wasn't serious, only to be diagnosed with epilepsy after traveling out of town. She still can commute for specialist visits, which is challenging with a toddler and a teenager at home. A coworker battling stage-three rectal cancer had to go to Gainesville for diagnosis, recurring scans, and surgeries, and I could share countless other stories of others who were, lives were disrupted not only by their illness, but of the burden of having to travel away from their families for the care and their support systems to receive the specialty care that they needed. This academic health center brings the opportunity for advanced specialty care to be provided here at home. This issue is deeply personal. My 85-year-old mother is at a point where she can no longer live alone. I want her to move here and live with me, but she has multiple complex chronic conditions. When she asks me if she can get the specialty care here in Tallahassee as good as what she receives at the University of Miami, I hesitate. Right now, I can't honestly tell her yes. That is why this partnership matters. It means Tallahassee families can get world-class specialty care without leaving their support systems behind. I've heard concerns that FSU Health will lose TMH's current focus on serving populations with the greatest health needs, including underinsured and uninsured populations. I think these views are misinformed. I live less than a mile away from FSU Primary Health. This is my primary care office and my daughter's. It was intentionally placed in my neighborhood, a low-income, low-access area, and I've seen firsthand the positive impact it has had for my neighbors. According to the Association of American Medical Colleges, the FSU College of Medicine is one of the best in the nation at preparing doctors who serve their communities. They are nationally recognized for training physicians who are passionate about serving rural and underserved areas and responsive to community needs, especially elders, rural communities, and the uninsured. This MOU is about more than buildings or contracts. It's about ensuring that the people of Tallahassee don't have to leave their city for world-class care, and that our children, parents, and neighbors can get the treatment they need right here at home. This is about keeping families together, bringing the best care to our area, and making sure no one in our city has to leave town to get the healthcare that they deserve. I urge you to support this MOU and help make Tallahassee a true hub for healthcare innovation, research, and education. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Wendy Gray, followed by Perry Brown.
Good morning. My name is Wendy Gray. My address is 1047 Myers Park Drive, and I'm here not to speak either for or against the MOU, but to raise some concerns about it. First, I'd like to say that I completely agree with the recent commentary by Mary Ann Lindley regarding additional questions that need to be answered about the agreement. Mr. O'Brien said that he wanted to focus on the outcomes and not necessarily the journey, but sometimes the path you take directs which results you're going to find. And I think that while there have been excellent objectives identified, the lack of information, data, and analysis has been striking, considering what assets the city is being asked to relinquish. We heard early, just a few minutes ago, some options about how this might benefit the community at large, done in other cities. Our agenda item was really just, excuse me for saying this, but seemed like a PR piece for accepting this option, but not really laying out what the options and the benefits and the potential pitfalls could be for the community. Most importantly, one of the first lines of the agreement says that this is a non-binding agreement, so it's really not clear to me why, what the city is being asked to agree to if the agreement itself is non-binding. So I would urge you to take the time, as some of the other speakers have indicated, to do more research on what we might expect to happen and what some of the options may be for benefiting the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
See, Perry Brown is next, followed by Tiwa Aiken.
Thank you for joining us.
Good morning. My name is Perry Brown. 4420 Cool Emerald Drive. The last 28 years, I've been a resident of Tallahassee, more specifically as Professor of Epidemiology and Biostatistics at the Institute of Public Health at Florida A&amp;M University. During my time here, I've spent a fair amount of effort serving on NIH and CDC research evaluation communities. One of the things that has become very, very clear is that, and it's been mentioned before, that the health of communities is improved by the presence of academic health centers. More specifically, my last review was the utilization of the electronic health record along with the concept of social determinants of health to look at and evaluate health outcomes. And it's clear that the opportunity to do so here in Tallahassee is right before us, is right in our grasp. I would add one other thing. Being an epidemiologist, as Dr. Roberson has mentioned, it has made me painfully clear that data is important. And as we move forward with an academic health center, the necessity for having a robust data collection, analysis, and interpretation is essential. It's essential for health outcomes. It's essential for community to understand. And it also, then related to that, it is essential for the Health Science Center, or the Health Center, to continue its partnership with community and provide not only just health resources, but also to provide research opportunities and collaboration with community. Community-based participatory research is essential. That will move both the Health Center forward as well as the communities forward.
You have 30 seconds.
A quote from one of my professors in graduate school. He said, "Some information is better than none. More information is better than some." Information is derived from interpretation, which comes from data and analysis. So I would encourage in the thinking of the construct of the center to keep in mind data.
Our next speaker, please.
Tiwa Aiken is next. Will be followed by Cassandra Jenkins.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Tiwa Aiken. I live at 1945 Durham Avenue. I'm here today because I did not know as much about this MOU. I speak for a couple different, not only organizations, but members of my community in saying that I did not know about this until Sunday. With that being said, I would like to echo some of the voices of the people that have come up previously in saying that this MOU would be positive and that there's a lot of data that shows how communities are improved by it. I also want to echo the ballot referendum, the governance that people will actually be able to have from this, starting with the ballot referendum and the three questions I actually wrote. As an academic health center with board that needs 75% supermajority, how will that be influenced by the governor? I am very curious about this as becoming a school medical center, which is a public university. How will that then be influenced by our state leaders and overarching-type leadership? It's been said time and time again, this is a community asset, and we really need to recognize it as such. Secondly, continuing an indignant care and training. What is the representation of the board to look like in reference to the unhoused community, undocumented patients, the working-class residents, as well as the students? How are we making sure that all of these people are truly represented by the board members that we have to make these decisions and then accurately, as one speaker has already said, compose the board so that it is not a slight knife-type tip to making decisions that will negatively impact our communities in a time of upheaval? Third, partnerships with schools like FAMU and TSC have been mentioned. The programs currently in place alluded to, but I, as a FAMU alumnus, am curious, how can these be concretized to tools that these schools will have as resources? Because I know the School of Pharmacy, and I very much believe the School of Nursing. Like, they have a lot of onus put onto them.
About 20 seconds.
Thank you. We see in various other departments, which are still important in making these type things happen, lacking in ways, lacking in funding, and lacking in actual resources to work on this. So I would like to see how this works. Please put a ballot referendum so the community knows, and bring data into it. Lots of data.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Cassandra Jenkins, and then Howard Kessler.
Name and address for the record, please. Good morning.
Good morning, Cassandra Jenkins. 1028 Long Street Drive, Tallahassee, Florida. I have dedicated my life's work and career to providing community service and enhancing the quality of life for children, families, and underserved communities locally, statewide, and nationally. I have extensive experience as an administrator and chief executive in the fields of criminal and juvenile justice, public policy, program, and planning. I have witnessed firsthand the multitude of problems that an unhealthy individual and their families experience, and the lifelong impact when individuals are not provided with appropriate healthcare services, treatment, and support to increase the odds of not just surviving, but thriving. And on a personal note, I've had some of my family members and close friends have to go to other areas to receive necessary healthcare and life-saving treatment through clinical trials. So this is personal to me as well. During my tenure working within the law enforcement and criminal justice arena, again, working within the criminal justice and law enforcement arena, I realized that it is not enough to just talk about reforms and make a few changes. We must be willing to make transformative changes and appropriately support and fund systems and services that are interrelated and interconnected with many of the issues confronted by our communities and healthcare system. Physical health, mental health, education, child welfare, substance misuse, criminal and juvenile justice, public safety, quality affordable housing, employment, and livable wages, community and economic development. I truly believe the proposed FSU-TMH Academic Health Center will be a win-win for the Tallahassee-Lon County community and all its residents, as well as this region of the state. It's imperative that we look at the bigger picture, leverage our resources, and foster innovations in ways that will benefit the most people to improve the quality of life in our community and the surrounding area. You've already heard many of the benefits, and I've looked at some of the benefits and researched it myself. I fully support the proposal to create an academic health center in Tallahassee and applaud everyone who have worked hard to bring it before the City Commission for their thoughtful consideration.
You have about 30 seconds.
I urge our elected officials to carefully consider all the public input and recommendations received as they move forward on this proposal. Again, I urge our officials to support this proposal, but carefully consider all the public input and recommendations received as they move forward on this proposal. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Howard Kessler is our next speaker, followed by Dale Landry.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Howard Kessler, 32303. Commissioners, you are giving the citizens an extremely rushed and flawed process. Commissioners, you're giving the citizens an extremely rushed and flawed process. This is a very complex proposal requiring months or years of discussion and study, not a few weeks. State universities and colleges are under the control of Governor DeSantis. Governor DeSantis made changes at New College in Sarasota. How did that go? He destroyed a quality liberal arts college. He got a tenured position for Secretary of Health Latipo at UF. How did that work out for UF? Not well. DeSantis's handpicked UF President, Ben Sasse, resigned after just two years, but continues to receive his yearly $1 million salary through 2028. This board gave FSU citizen tax dollars so FSU could buy improved stadium seating. Now you are rushing to give up this important community asset and lose control of your hospital. FSU is a state university under the control of Governor DeSantis. Will women's emergency healthcare and birth control medications be denied? Will TMH continue to treat trans and gay and woke people under Governor DeSantis? Will healthcare become more expensive? Will minorities be treated as second-class citizens at the new FSU-TMH as DeSantis has rewritten history of slavery and minorities? Will people at risk from ICE be more fearful of seeking care at this hospital? Will free speech exist when making rounds, speaking to our patients or with our colleagues? Will COVID and other vaccines have to follow the new non-science-based guidelines of CDC and Latipo? The list goes on. In a recent survey, 31% of Florida professors said they have applied for jobs outside of Florida since 2023. One professor teaching at a Tier One research university said, quote, "Most of the courses I've taught for decades now violate state and university mandates." Would you and I want Governor DeSantis and Secretary Latipo in your exam rooms? Of course not. State government having greatest sway over the healthcare is bad. Cancel the October 22 hearing, but have meetings. Get as much public input as possible. Schedule workshops with experts from other universities.
You're at about thirty seconds.
With affiliated teaching hospitals such as UF, USF, and UM, with healthcare faculty from local colleges and universities, medical and dental representatives from our Capitol Medical Society, make available to the community enough knowledge for a properly informed referendum on November 2026 ballot, which I strongly urge you to revisit. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Dale Landry is next, and he'll be followed by John Hedrick.
Good morning, Mayor Daley.
Good morning.
Commissioners, President Floyd, uh, TMH, and I see our FSU President had to step out, but y'all can bring up my points when he gets back. My name is Dale Landry, 1940, Antico Circle, Tallahassee, Florida. As a matter of preference, many of you know me as being the President of the NAACP here for many years and Vice President for the state, but I am not. I am not here speaking on behalf of NAACP. I'm speaking as a community activist. We tend to forget a lot of things. In history, plays a role, and I've been running this thing for about, in this game for about 20-plus years here in Tallahassee. I'm originally from Panama. But one of the things we're not talking about from in the past, and not long ago, when another governor, he came in and counseled out all Florida black colleges right before the budget was re-signed. We got a phone call from a lieutenant governor that was on his staff, but not the lieutenant governor, but he called the NAACP, asked us to intervene. And we did, through the sitting lieutenant governor. So what was at stake was up signing that budget. Water Memorial was going to close immediately once that budget went into effect. Elwood Waters was going to close immediately once that budget went into effect. But Thune Cookman had one semester, and FAMU had one year. Thank God the lieutenant governor at the time intervened, and that governor at the time backed off. One of the things you all are getting ready to do, even though we say we're getting ready to hand this over to FSU, there's another darker side we need to be ready for. FSU don't own no property. No more than FAMU owns any property. The property in the state of Florida for the university belonged to the Board of Governors. We've already seen them act. What's at stake here, folk, ain't about your healthcare. We're going to take care of the healthcare. I give that to Mark. Y'all do a great job of that. All right? What's at stake here is the FAMU Medical School. I want you to go back and look at what you saw up there. FSU Health. Now, I'm not mad. I'm glad to see they invited Vice President Palmer to sit at the table, but the table was set the way it's supposed to have been set. FSU, TMH, TSC in the audience, FAMU in the audience. On what's getting ready to come down the road, folk, once you make the transfer, and I think.
You're thirty seconds.
Mr. Kessler on his comments. One of the things that's in effect is DeSantis' run, and we've already seen how he operates. The medical schools will be gone. They will not be signed on as partners. They will be absorbed because all it takes is the Board of Governors to say it, and the schools transfer, the buildings transfer. It ain't no vote of no legislature. It's done.
You're at three minutes.
So on that note, and thank you, sir, on that note, I didn't come prepared to speak. I will be on the 26th.
Thank you, Mr. Landry.
That wasn't three minutes, sir. I don't think. Was it? Okay, then, I'll stand down. But thank you very much. I'll be back on the 26th, but keep that in mind. It ain't about that. It's about the loss of our school.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
John Hedrick, and then Paul Arons.
Your name and address, please.
Good morning, Mayor, City Commissioners, audience, and invite guests. My name's John Hedrick. I live at 1551 Christopher Ball Drive. I think we all are agreed that we want to see high-quality healthcare in this community, and access to that high-quality care is most important. But this is not something I think you're already hearing from the people that have been speaking, it's something that needs to be rushed. We need to take our time for it. For example, if we're really looking at high-quality care in the community, has anyone had any discussions with Mayo at all? There's been some concern that FSU has not run an academic medical center before. Mayo, of course, has a world-class operation they've got. They could step in immediately if they're working on things like this. You also have had concerns expressed about different players here in the community. Well, let's put them at the table. How about seats on the board for FAMU, TSC, the Appalachia Center? And when we put that board together, we don't have it with a one-vote margin. We have community control over it by a larger than a one-vote margin. Because I think there is a statement to be made that we don't want to see any way that the state can have control of our hospital. After all, the state has not expanded Medicare. They have very dangerous vaccine mandates they're attempting to push on the rest of us at this point. If this goes forward, we do have to be concerned with the cost of the hospital, an asset being turned over, and has been estimated to be in the range of $1 billion. That's money that, under state law, if it truly was sold versus just a transfer, it could bring in 50% of the money for indigent healthcare, if future delivery of indigent So all these things, I think, are endemic to the fact, I think we need more time to work a lot of these things through and address all these things, inform the public, and then I think it would be very appropriate, given a decision as major as this, is as you all remember, we have had referendums in this community on things like coal plants, which is a pretty big item.
You're at about thirty seconds.
Thank you, sir. I would think we need to revisit the issue of having a referendum. Let's have the citizens make the final call on this. You can recommend it to us and say you ought to do it. Let's have the citizens ultimately do this. Thank you very much for y'all's time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Paul Arons. Paul Arons, followed by Cheryl Collier-Brown.
Good morning, Commissioners, and experts, and other members of the public. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Paul Arons. I live at 1706 Beachwood Circle in Tallahassee. I'm a physician, and I was the medical director in the Florida Department of Health HIV/AIDS Program, now retired. I was struck by the item on one of the slides that said FSU will be the lead applicant for federal and state research grants. My impression is that current state and federal government trends are exclusionary, judgmental, and anti-science. So my question is, will policies of FSU as surrogate of the state government require that grant applications be scrubbed of concerns of those that I consider most in need? Broadening that question, will policies of FSU as surrogate of state government endanger immigrants, transgender individuals, women's and reproductive rights, homeless persons, racial and sexual minorities, all the elements of DEI, which people of goodwill recognize are fundamental to what our country should be about? Is there any way that you can assure scientific and medical and human rights independence from the political agendas that characterize our current state and federal governments and culture? I assert that such guarantees are essential if this partnership is to move forward. I also strongly support the request to put this merger proposal on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Cheryl Collier-Brown is our next speaker, and Mayor, at this time, that's our final speaker.
All right. If anybody else is interested in speaking on this issue that's here, that hasn't had a chance to fill out a card, please do so. We want to make sure we hear from everyone.
Good morning. Cheryl Collier-Brown, 217 West Bravard Street. I'm standing here because I'm all over the city, and I'm not speaking against it or for it at this particular time. My concern is that we have some constituents and citizens are still confused about the merger of FSU with TMH. I would like, and I'm requesting that if it's at all possible before the final decision is made, that we can kind of get out in the community and explain to them a little bit more clearer, where they can understand exactly what's going on, because they are confused. I've been trying to explain it better from what I've observed and what I've heard. That's why I'm here today. But when you first brought it up, they asked me about it because they know I'm very active in the community. I said, "Well, I don't know. I'm coming to see." So we need to make sure so this can be received overwhelmingly happily, peace of mind, that we get out and try to inform some of our citizens that it's going out here with the wrong information, the wrong conception. So when this, whatever happens here, it can be, everybody have a peace of mind and have some clarification. That's all I'm asking. You know, I believe in community involvement. If you set up where they can come out and listen to what you have to say, TMH, FSU, city, then we can come back and then make a decision and know that you've put it out there where everybody understands, because they do not. And that's why I'm here this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Clark, do we have any other public comment?
No, sir.
Anybody else here that has not had the chance to speak that would like to speak All right, we'll close out the public hearing and roll up our sleeves, and let's have a great, robust conversation. So I took some notes that I just want to throw out there, first of all, for the team to consider and respond, and I don't know who's going to be the best to handle each issue. I am going to come to the manager first to talk about the transfer of assets and the expectation in just a second. But a couple of things as well. Once again, I heard from the public, local governance, stressing the need for local governance, transparency, and timing. Ms. Needham, Dr. Watson, y'all could probably talk about the continuity of services since TMH is going to remain as the operator as well. Access keeps coming up as well. I know it was brought up by representatives of the previous chairs about the finalized agreement before moving forward as well, the non-binding nature of the agreement as it was stated. Obviously, data collection, analysis, concerns about state leadership and control. Mr. President, Florida State, maybe that's one for y'all to address as well. Conversations with other partners, whether they're the local partners, FAMU is on the record in support, Tallahassee State College is on the record in support, what other conversations might have taken place as well, and community outreach. So that's what I heard. I probably missed a couple, too, so I'm encouraging everybody to...
Everybody have a question.
Timeline, what's our timeline? How do we move forward with this? That's a good point. But first, Mr. Manager, I would like to start with you in regards to the transfer of assets.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, thank you for that question, and good information to share. I think many people learned of the city's ownership role in this process. Originally, in the 1950s, the city built the hospital at the location of the main campus today, when the community was in need of a central hospital, and that existed for many decades after that. And then in 1979, the City of Tallahassee executed a lease with what's known today as TMH, and that turned over the use of those assets in any future development and operation of the hospital to TMH. And TMH has been the leaseholder or operator of the hospital ever since. In the lease, I think this is important to note, in the lease, it says that the City of Tallahassee remains the title holder of the land and the main buildings. Not everything that TMH owns, but that main campus, I think you can visualize it as such, that's about 75 acres, a couple million square feet, including the contents of those buildings. I think it's important to note, though, that many of the buildings that are on the campus today that we associate with the hospital, notably the Mushin Center, that's a new facility, they were built and constructed and paid for, financed by TMH. But the lease defaults those to the city's, the city is the title holder for those. So those are the ones, the assets we're talking about. Even though TMH built them, they financed them, those, the lease calls for them. In the case of the lease, it's a perpetual 40-year lease, so there's not an opportunity, you know, hypothetically, in a few years, somehow they come to the city. It's just structured that way in the agreement. What the MOU between FSU and TMH does is it calls for the transfer of those assets that are outlined in the lease agreement, the original 1979 agreement, the land, the building, the contents, to be transferred to FSU for the purposes that you heard earlier in the presentation, the financial advantage that provides, the partnership it provides. And so those are the assets in question. It's those assets defined in the lease, and many of which have been built and financed and operated by TMH since the inception of that lease, but that would allow the most efficient, effective partnership moving forward. And so that's, when we talk about the assets, those are the assets that are referred to.
Specifically, is the idea that this is a free transfer of assets to TMH, or are there negotiations that are going on?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you for that question. There's been a lot of discussion, and certainly we're looking for some direction, but I don't think it's ever been the expectation, certainly not of myself, and I think I can speak for FSU, and there's been conversations with TMH, but in this case, it would be FSU as the counterparty to that transfer, that there would be the transfer of assets at no compensation. Now, how that looks and the shape of it, there's probably a thousand ways to do it. There's been a lot of discussion about the fair market value of the hospital, and certainly that's something that can be analyzed, but I'll say again, that the value of those assets is not the hospital. The hospital is the going concern. That would be the business. The city has no right to that business. The assets themselves exist, and you can value those assets, but the city can't sell those assets with the lease that we have today. And so there would be analysis in terms of value and worth, but in my opinion, I've shared this, we've had conversations, I think for a number of reasons, probably a future revenue stream to the citizens of Tallahassee is probably in its best interest, certainly looking for the commission's direction on that, that we could work on to establish what we believe adds value of this. adds value of this transaction in today and in the future for the citizens of Tallahassee, and of course, not burdening the system. Clearly, I think what we've heard is the, you know, academic health center has immense value to the community, and there's so many items under that umbrella. I think what we all should be cognizant of, though, is resources, money, access to capital is important. So we want to make sure that the system remains healthy and vibrant and is able to, you know, put as many dollars into the healthcare, active healthcare as possible. And so I think that, to me, that's an important concept, how you do it, the structure of it, what makes sense, and then how do the citizens of Tallahassee, the original owners of the hospital, how do they value, benefit of that value today and in the future?
Great. Brought up some other points that I heard from the public comment. Anybody want to jump in? Some of the governance issues that we're talking about, or access issues, and, yeah, Mark?
I'd like to talk about what the community really is looking for in healthcare. And this is a conversation we've had for a long time. Like I mentioned earlier, this is not a new strategy. This is not the last six months. This is literally the last two decades we've been working on this project. There are milestones along the way, and this, the last few months represents a major milestone to get us to where we need, but it depends on really what the community wants. If you want robust, complex health services, it requires really two major things. One is population. If you want to create complex service support in this community, you can't do it off of a population of 300,000 to 400,000. You can't do it. If we want to have a general acute care, bread and butter, primary, secondary, tertiary hospital, that's fine, but if we want to have an academic health platform, if we want to bring in HPB services, complex GI services, very high-level heart programs, structural and neurosurgery programs, it requires population. And to do that, we have to expand, and this goes beyond, going beyond a city hospital. We have to create broader population networks. The other thing it takes is capital. It takes large dollars because these things aren't free. Now, I will tell you, the one thing that we have made as our true north is to keep our local governance. That's been key because that's how we preserve our relationship with the community. That's how we make sure that the needs, the unique needs of our region are served. That's how we make sure that the mission of indigent care, care for all, that box is always checked because that is a part of our core mission. But if we're going to create this higher level of care, we've got to create a different platform for care. A different platform requires us to look at things differently, and that's why we chose this path jointly years ago to follow an academic health model because that is what allows us to expand our services, expand our markets, bring new dollars to the table for the benefit, again, of those we serve. If the community is not interested in those services, we can retract back and just become a community-based hospital serving our local, regional population. But I don't think that anyone here is interested in that. I hope not. I'm not because I think we should be looking at healthcare as a viable part of not just our economy, but our quality of life, as I mentioned before. We always have to be advancing that, and there are limited vehicles to do that. An academic health platform is the most favorable, by far, vehicle for us to achieve that. Now, we have to do it in a balance, and I think that's what we're talking about here. This is a partnership structure. It really is built on the partnership model. That's what we've tried to explain in this presentation, and there's give and take in partnerships. That's the way partnerships work. But I think as we move forward, we've done that in a good faith effort. Like I say, it's been an interesting journey, but the outcome, I am absolutely convinced and committed to making sure, convinced that it is the best model for our community and one that we are committed to make sure that we do in a way that protects our community but also gives our community the benefits of everything we need as an academic health program.
Mr. President?
Yeah, let me address the governance issue as well. So we worked together to put together the board structure, and we came to complete agreement, unanimous support by the TMH board, and, you know, we hammered that out, and we have a clear understanding on the way that that's going to work. And again, the whole purpose of this, from my perspective, is not, you know, I understand change is hard, a lot of fear. I recognize the fear. The fear is real, but I understand all that. But our goal is to create better healthcare for Tallahassee and the region. That's really what our goal is. And our goal is to do that, and I can march through it. I want to do that for myself and my family. I want to do that for the employees of Florida State University. I want to do that for the professors that we're recruiting in the future. When you move to an area, the one thing you look at is, what's the healthcare? Is the healthcare good? What's going to happen if something really, you know, bad happens to me? What do I have to do? So you could say it's selfish initially, but it's also, as I said, we are about the community, you know? This idea that somehow Florida State University is not part of the community is just, that's silliness. We are a dominant feature of the community, and we want to be a part of the community in a helpful way. We really do. We really do. I think the agreement has a lot of trap doors in it. If somebody that's maybe not as nice as I am, if you'll accept that, comes in and tries to do something that's untoward, there is some trap doors in there, and I think that's really good. And we work, Mark and I, and his board and my board, worked hard on putting those in. We, there's no state involvement in this. Sure, we get a lot of money from the state. We got $125 million to build this research building on TMH's campus. I think that's the commitment that the state is making to healthcare. When I talk to the leadership and legislature, which are not involved, when I talk to the executive office of the governor, we're not involved, they say, "Hey, we're rooting you on to really try to improve healthcare in this region." Again, they live in this region. Some of them live here permanently. Some of them live here half the time. Some of them live here during session. A lot of them send their kids here. They want the best healthcare that they can for this region. So I get mostly cheering on from them and support from anything that has to do with legislature and the state. There's no oversight. There's no secret plan. There is no, there's no backroom things going on. This is just Florida State University trying to help the region improve healthcare and try to increase our research in the area of biomedical research and clinical research, which in turn benefits the hospital. This is, if you go to the best hospitals in the world, what do they talk about? They don't talk about how great their doctors are. They talk about cutting-edge therapies that change the world. Why do they do that? Because exactly what Mark said, it attracts people from all over the region and around the country to come to be here as a destination. That is a model that academic health centers bring to the table, and it's the major reason that we want to do something. So I understand some of the things that were said. I mean, a non-binding MOU? Why is it a non-binding MOU? Because I don't have the authority to make an MOU. It's contingent upon approval by the city and the city commission. So contingent's probably a better word than non-binding MOU, but we tried to put together what we thought was best for the both of us and what was best for the city and the citizens in this region. So, and again, obviously happy to answer any questions.
Cool. All right, let's go ahead and open it up. Commissioner Porter, I'm going to start with you on that end, and let's just have a conversation. We can ask, you got all the experts here, any questions that you have as well, and we'll just go down the line and talk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if anyone else wants to go first, they're welcome to. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here. This is an exciting conversation for our community, and I want to make clear that I do support an academic medical center in Tallahassee. I have driven friends to Jacksonville. I have driven friends to Gainesville when I was in middle school and I was diagnosed with epilepsy. Even living in South Florida, in Broward County, where there's access to all kinds of medical facilities and doctors, I had to travel two hours in traffic to go to Miami, and I traveled to other states. When I moved to FSU as a student, I frequently had to drive eight hours, take a bus, eight hours to Miami to see care. I wasn't allowed to drive because of my epilepsy. And many of our patients in Tallahassee who have to go to care are probably in similar positions, whether it's financial or medical restrictions that prevent them from going elsewhere to receive care. So I do want to make clear that I support a partnership and an academic medical center. I've had great conversations with TMH and FSU. I have no doubt about the sincerity of their commitment to improving healthcare in Tallahassee and in this, and in this region. And while it is true that there, these discussions have been going on for many, many years, what is coming to us is new and new to the public. And my understanding as well is that a conversation about transfer of the assets or even a sale is new and not something that has been considered for, you know, 15 years while these conversations have been ongoing and the partnership discussed. There are also, as far as I understand it, and I'll ask more questions about this later, more steps, more agreements that need to be flushed out as part of this, obviously. And I have some questions about what that will look like and how those decisions are made and how they'll affect how we move forward. I do want to ask about the transfer of assets and your comments, Mr. City Manager and Mr. Mayor, about a potential compensation or, because I'm not privy to any of that, those discussions. The item pretty clearly says transfer, and so I'm wondering if you could elaborate on that.
Mr. Mayor, ma'am? Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. I think that's the direction that I'm looking for from the commission today. You know, we have indicated, and certainly it's your direction, how we handle that. But if you transfer the assets, I think it stands to reason that the citizens of Tallahassee would receive some form of compensation. Now, that's not to diminish at all. In fact, I think that is a far distant second to the value of the improved healthcare or expanding improved healthcare. We have good healthcare today. It continues to expand. Clearly, that, in my opinion, is the greatest and highest value, but is there monetary compensation? And that's, certainly, we're able to put that together. The counterparty would be FSU in this case, based on the structure of the MOU. I think it could be done any number of ways, you know, kind of the principles of what the city, you know, at the direction of the city commission, what you're trying to achieve. Again, I would say, keep in mind, many of these assets have been built and paid for by TMH and with current mortgages, if you will. I think that matters. I think the lease itself matters. Again, we don't own or operate the business. That matters. All these things come into play, and so how do you find that balance of benefit to the citizens, monetary, beyond the healthcare benefits, and then put it together? We have, you know, a number of ways I think we can do it. I'm looking for direction from the city commission today, and I would love the direction to be able to bring that concept, if we can reach an MOU. And of course, an MOU is not a final agreement. I think it probably should be said, even with the MOU that has been shared with the city between FSU and TMH, that's an MOU. And by the way, it's a 13-page MOU. Most of them are two pages. So it has a lot of details, but the final agreement that will be codified based on this MOU will be dozens and maybe hundreds of pages, and that's something that TMH and FSU would work on. So the same would be true for the city, to the extent there was some agreement, some, you know, generalized structure of agreement between the city and FSU related to the transfer of assets, that would be the structure ultimately that would lead to a final agreement. And so that, that's the discussion and direction that I'm looking for from the city commission. We're poised and ready to do it. We've got a lot of thoughts on how we think we could do that, but that would be a next step in the city's action.
On point, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Clark, I saw your facial expression when the mayor first said compensation. I recognize that's probably not a new conversation to you. Have you been in conversations with the city or the mayor about compensation before this meeting?
I've had conversations with the city, not with the mayor.
Okay. And how have those conversations gone as far as the need for compensation or the dollar amount?
University recognizes that the city's expectation is for compensation, and I would say we're having very engaged discussions about it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the record, the city's expectations wasn't included in our agenda item. So any conversations that have happened before this meeting, if we can have transparency on what has taken place today, it would be helpful. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those conversations were between me and FSU, to be clear, which I've already said. That's clearly in my role as city manager, creating the thought and expectation that that probably would be a requirement. I think to stand flat-footed and static without expressing that, as all of this work has gone in, would be a mistake. We've not gone down the path of making details as for the direction of the city commission. But I think there's been so much discussion, and in my opinion, as city manager, some form of compensation would be warranted. But of course, the city commission could say that not the case. The city commission certainly could give the direction that we believe simply the transfer of assets and the improvement in healthcare in the future would be adequate, or you could say take a different path. So those conversations have been obvious. I think that's important to be clear with the counterparty, but it would all be at the direction of the city commission.
You're also on point.
On point. Mayor Protem.
Just to be clear, as Ms. Cheryl Collier-Brown said, the community is confused. Just to be clear, transfer, turnover, and give does not mean free. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Porter, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Respectfully, I mean, then that needs to be laid out in the item. There's no reason, you know, when we get items come back to us, there are options, and that was never explicitly stated. And of course, it's such a huge matter of importance to the community and in the public discussion. I'm not sure why this is the first at that time that that clarification is being made.
Well, I think the emergency meeting was called specifically to see if there was interest, and this being the first part of the process moving forward. If there is no interest, there's no reason to move forward. Now, I do think there's interest amongst this board to move forward, and so as part of the process, the manager will bring these items before us for consideration in all due time with public input and the ability for us to come to conclusions. But I think that today's special meeting was simply to see, is there interest in the MOU and moving forward with this process?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand the process, and I'm giving a critique of the process. Okay, so can someone speak to the fact that the item says that this partnership? Okay, well, first of all, let me backtrack. So, or can someone address, so it was not until recently this year that a discussion about a sale or transfer of assets was a discussion as a part of this partnership? Is that correct? Anyone can answer.
Yes, we never had that as a part of the conversation.
Okay. And is it possible to have an academic medical center where the city retains ownership of the assets?
It is, but that would mean that we could not, at FSU, make the kinds of investments in that academic medical center under that circumstance. And also, city-owned assets, also the complexity of the city having to issue the debt relative to FSU entering the debt, and so there are financial advantages for us owning the buildings because we can actually help to make improvements in the 15-year-old, you know, aging plant that we couldn't do if it was owned by the city. So that's my understanding. And then the restrictions around, we spend money to build up the academic program, as you and I already discussed, and that's, I think is a great question. And so if we go to hire physicians, scientists, and stuff, we couldn't, we could still do that, but they, it makes it very complicated because it can't feed into the TMH ecosystem because of the restrictions around the budgetary and the way that the restrictions around the finance... finances. So that's the major issue. The debt thing is a huge thing, because, as you know well, the credit rating issues make a huge difference. If you're like Bs, then you might get charged 8%, and if you're A, you get charged 5%. So the arbitrage difference between the two is quite huge. And so we think that, I mean, that's like $40, $50 million to the black for a partnership like that. So that's our understanding of the budgetary and financial restrictions that we would have under those circumstances. And I don't know if Kyle Clark wants to add into that.
So I would just echo what the President said and just reiterate that we would anticipate potentially cost savings when you look at the capital market in terms of, there is, when you look at the rating methodology of like Standard and Poor's and Fitch, and you look at how they rate academic medical centers, they're normally done on a notch-based system. So with the university being rated as AA+, I think the last bond issuance that we did a couple of years ago, we were at 3%. Previously, we've issued some 15-year debt at less than 2%. So we're anticipating that there would be potentially significant cost savings with TMH when they go out and decide to do another project like the Muschin Center, et cetera, where the university will put their full faith and credit behind whatever project that TMH wants to move forward with.
I can give you a point of history, and this goes back to not the question of debt. Clearly, the cost of debt in a relationship with FSU are markedly better than what we would get as an individual 501(c)(3) community-based hospital. But as it relates to appropriations and drawing down dollars, that's not unfamiliar to us. We do get appropriations. From time to time, we make requests. But the history of that is, for a community-based hospital, these are very limited dollars. We get very few when you compare to academic programs. And so it's not a question of if, it's really the question of how effective. Academic health centers in the state of Florida, as an example, draw down significantly more dollars than community health systems. So yes, there is a history of us pulling dollars down, but these are typically in the six to low, low, low seven-digit numbers, but typically in the hundreds of thousands. And academic health centers pull down in the tens of millions, if not more. And so there is a difference in the ability from a community-based organization to basically apply for these and be effective in pulling dollars down than it would be through a state academic program.
And the other area, which I think you know well about, is the intergovernmental transfers. Currently, you need to be in academic medical center to access federal intergovernmental transfers. I don't see that there will be $200 million like Miami or whatever, but there's an opportunity to start to incrementally get that money, which is just reimbursement for doctor time and education and indigent care that gets reimbursed by the federal government. TMH currently doesn't access those dollars, but in our partnership, we would then have access to those dollars. Another advantage.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the item states, the agenda item states that state and federal appropriations for AMCs must be directed to university-owned facilities. Is you just, Mr. President, use the term intergovernmental transfers? Are those the same thing? Okay. So a clarifying question, isn't Tampa General Hospital not owned by USF? Are they owned by USF?
I'm not familiar with.
Okay. Does anyone know?
Is the question about...
Well, I'm just trying to understand. So I'm trying to understand, and I understand because we did speak about this.
I think I can.
I'm trying to get, I mean, do they accept? I guess I'm trying to understand. So what are the sources of revenue? And I mean, to say that, does that mean that clearly we're not saying that unless an AMC is university-owned, it can receive no state or federal fund?
So let me, and I am almost sure about this, but don't take me.
Understood.
Tampa General does have a relationship with USF. They do draw down large numbers of federal dollars in what they call IGTs.
What does that stand for?
Intergovernmental.
Okay, intergovernmental.
From my understanding, the reason why they're able to do that, you can draw it down from two approaches. One is through a university partnership with a qualified university, or the other is through a taxing district. And as I understand, Tampa General, through their relationship with the community, has a taxing district that pulls in local tax dollars to support the, basically, health concerns of the community. We don't have a taxing district in this market. TMH is the sole provider and source of indigent care. We don't ask the city, we don't ask the county for support. So that's the difference between us and Tampa General, is that they do have a vehicle through their taxing district to create a different revenue tax support for the IGT. We don't have that here.
Okay, thank you.
Your question is really complicated, actually, because the ins and outs of IGTs, I am no expert on those at all. So I'm really not. I'm not even sure that we have, or do you know enough about IGTs to be able to...
I think...
Some of those nuances?
What Mark said is correct. Those are the two avenues to participate in IGTs. I think it goes back to that, it's what you said about the investment that it would require for us to expand those programs that would even be eligible for that is really key. And so in making those improvements within the physical structure to be able to do that.
And I don't want to put you on the spot, but, Mark, so you said, either with Tampa General as an example, there's the taxing district, but then there's also a partnership with a qualified partner. Is that different than what FSU would be?
FSU would be that vehicle for creating an IGT opportunity, yes. That would be our opportunity to create that type of funding approach.
Okay.
We don't have a taxing district option in this market.
Right. And I'm not trying to harp on this issue, I'm just trying to understand. But so I guess I just want clarity on whether or not that is, those dollars are possible to access if, without university ownership, because I think Tampa General is not owned by USF. But I'll move on for now, although I do, that is something that I, as we move forward, want to understand better, the different sources of revenue that would be available to us under different models. And I say that just because this is, the ownership model, the ownership question is very important to people, as you, of course, can understand. So understanding the benefits that are only available to us under that model is really important to me and I think to the public as well. Mr. City Manager, would a transfer, a sale, whatever we want to call it, would that be considered a real estate transaction? And the reason I'm asking is because we have a real estate policy at the city that governs how we move forward related to real estate, disposing or acquiring real estate. Does that fall under this? It says, "For acquisitions, sales, or dispositions in which the estimated value of the real estate exceeds $300,000, two independent state-certified appraisers shall be retained to prepare an appraisal with an estimate of the value of the real estate." Does this not fall under that policy, or can you elaborate on your thoughts?
Mr. Baner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner, thank you for the question. I don't believe it does. Of course, the City Commission can take action outside of the policy. A uniqueness in this transaction that I mentioned earlier is that the city cannot simply sell this property. This property is encumbered by a lease and could only be transferred through an agreement that we see in front of us today between TMH and FSU whereby that lease arrangement changes. So that the city does not have the sole individual authority to sell the hospital. And so by way of that agreement, I think that makes it unique and probably not applicable to our policy. Of course, the City Commission can take any action it likes. That is a policy and give some guidance, but it's not an unencumbered piece of property or improved parcel. This is one that is obligated by way of a lease, and I think that makes it distinct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And I understand, of course, this is a unique situation. I think personally, if it is our standard to require two appraisals for any real estate that we believe is valued over $300,000, I really think we need to get an appraisal of what we're even talking about here when we talk about a transfer or a sale of assets. Is there a medical doctor with TMH, perhaps on the board, who I could direct any questions to?
What?
Sure. Would you mind, could you come to the podium?
Doctor, thanks for joining us. Name for the record, please.
Good morning, Carlos Campo. I'm a pulmonary critical care specialist, 1740 Highland Place, 3308.
Thank you, thank you. So the item says that, obviously, one of the benefits that we're discussing of an academic medical center is that people will be able to receive care here locally that they now currently have to travel to other cities to receive. But my question is a little bit about the timeframe of this, and given our population, what limitations there might be moving forward. So the item says, "This affiliation ensures that North Florida patients will no longer need to travel to Gainesville, Tampa, or Miami for advanced treatments." So what kind of doctor are you?
I'm a lung and critical care specialist.
Okay, okay.
So I can speak about my field if you would like.
Sure. So do we do lung transplants in Tallahassee?
No, we do not.
Okay. And...
So again...
Go ahead.
From my perspective, and if you look at our practice, I'm one of 11, 12 physicians in my practice and 30 nurse practitioners, a total of 30 providers with nurse practitioners, PAs. There are some patients that we do refer out. Most of them are for that specialized care, lung transplant, or difficult stent issues that we send to UF or Mayo. Aside of that, most of those patients do, the majority of pulmonary pathology that we see can be taken care of in Tallahassee. But I think a transplant program, I don't know how many years away that would be, but that is kind of like, I guess, an international airport, right? I mean, it takes infrastructure, it takes passengers, it takes cargo to build to that. And in the case of lung transplant, you need a certain volume to justify a transplant surgeon, a transplant team, a cost. Is there enough volume? It has taken UF and Mayo decades to build to where they are. That's in the pulmonary space.
Right, right.
In other specialties, obviously, things are different. Pediatric cardiac surgery, that's also, you need a certain volume of pediatric patients with those issues to build to that.
And, thank you, and whoever wants to answer this question. So what is the kind of volume that, and I understand that lung transplants are especially incredibly specialized. It's not the kind of thing a bunch of people in Tallahassee need. But what I'm trying to get a sense of is being realistic about what we are telling people we are going to be able to provide.
Yeah. Mark, Dr. Watson, why don't you all jump in real quick? We've mentioned about no change in status moving forward and access to care, but talk about the evolution, talk about the evolution of the care.
Yeah, sure. So that's a great question. So focusing on specific specialties that we need for this community is really what we're looking at. So examples, Mark mentioned them, and I may have mentioned them, but a pediatrie surgeon, right? So to bring in a specialist that focuses specifically on the liver, which is very helpful in this community, you have to send those folks out. And to be able to advance some of our cancer care, some of the advanced cancer care that we want to provide, you need to have a pediatrie surgeon. Bring one to this community, that surgeon would have to not only practice HEB, but they would also have to practice...
Can you tell, what is HEB? Okay.
So they would have to practice that and general surgery to maintain their practice in this community. Well, nobody wants to do that in that specialty, right? I've gone to do my specialty training. I want to do my specialty that I trained in. So with this relationship, that opens that opportunity, because many of them actually are interested in doing research as well. So when you start partnering with organizations like FSU, which does a great job in research and education, and we bring the clinical component of that, that gives you that opportunity to bring these people here, because we can offer them new things. Another one is advanced GI procedures, gastroenterology procedures, right? And that's another one. Another one is advanced cardiothoracic surgery procedures. All the things I just said, you can mold those into specialty. So that's our main focus.
Okay.
And another reason why we go out and expand into additional markets for your population is those patients would come to Tallahassee for those higher levels of care, but they reside in those communities that are 100, 150 miles from us in all different directions. That's why we are seeking to create these network structures to build a population base that would support these higher levels of care, and eventually maybe getting into some of those even higher aspects of care.
Dr. Patterson, you going to jump in?
I was going to, and we've started to have those discussions about what those areas need to be that are specific for this region. And FSU is also in large collaborations with other tertiary and quaternary care centers like the Mayo Clinic of Florida. We have a large and growing collaboration with the Mayo Clinic, and bringing some of those resources to bear in this partnership can be very fruitful. For example, over the last year, we started a Healthy Liver Project with the Mayo Clinic and FSU Primary Care, where Mayo actually donated a piece of equipment to FSU. We're doing non-invasive scans on patients in the FSU Primary Care clinic that will keep them off that, that will, early prevention, and my grandmother used to say, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure."
Right.
And so these kind of early interventions, moving, pulling primary care together with some of these more complex care opportunities is something that FSU can really, is an area where we can really shine. But we need the clinical partnerships to be able to do that to better serve the patients here in Tallahassee. And that partnership with Mayo and FSU Primary Care is already paying dividends and demonstrating interventions that can happen for these patients to keep them off the liver transplant list.
I forgot to mention one, and I apologize. Pediatrics is another one that we're focused on. I need to get closer? Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
I don't think anybody's ever said they can't hear me, so this is great. So yeah, pediatrics is another one that is a focus of ours. And to Dr. Patterson's point is that we are working with other universities to focus on that, to bring that to the region, and that's important.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Campo. And I understand the benefits. I just want to make sure that both I understand and we are being forthcoming with the public as far as when we will really see the fruits of this partnership and any investment. I don't want a family who has a child with cancer to think that next year, they're going to be able, they're not going to ever have to travel anywhere. And of course, we have the goal, a shared goal, that that never has to be the case, and that we invest in prevention and everything else. I just want us to be clear about what this means for the community and the timeline that it's going to take, the time that it's going to take for us to achieve some of these benefits. Some of them, I understand, may be immediate, and others might take, like some speakers have said, decades with SHANES and other institutions. So this can be for anyone, and we just discussed this a little bit. So I know that AMCs often have, from my understanding, some kind of specialization, or as you said, an area of focus that is based on what our community's needs are. Is that something that, it seems like it maybe has been discussed, where does that, is that like an academic agreement or research agreement? How do we make those decisions about, and who makes the decisions about where we decide to invest in a certain specialization? And how does that factor in with where... And how does that factor in with where research dollars are available or other sources of revenue to actually meet the local need?
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, I think we have to... We have a lot of work to do on assessment to figure out, like, where the gaps are, where we need to make those investments. And you're exactly right. I mean, it will be a sort of a strategic look at everything. I mean, the board, the new board that would be formed would set the strategic direction. We would work together to try to figure out, like, what makes sense in terms of investment. I mean, like, you know, and I know you said it already, but, like, lung transplant, I mean, I'm not the world's expert, but I lived in Pittsburgh for a long time. Like, we won't be doing lung transplant. It's like, you know, it's a really super complicated... You know, you could see kidney transplant, maybe. Liver would be the next more complicated. I don't know. But certainly, things that are obvious, like cancer, things like that. But, you know, that's really... This is outside of my depth, but I just wanted to sort of speak to... That's exactly... It's exactly the reason we want to do this, is to have TMH say, "Hey, this is what we see in the community. This is what we see needs to be done." But, you know, it's going to cost money for us to, you know... We're not investing in research at TMH to work in this area, but on the clinical care piece, we could certainly do that. Could we jointly, you know, recruit physicians, scientists to work in this area? And we may need new infrastructure to move into this area. And so, that's what this partnership is really all about. And you're right, there are some areas that were going to take decades, and it's not going to happen overnight. There is no way. But it will... But, you know, hard is the work, and we're going to, you know, and we have the resources to try to make some of those things happen. Not everything, not everything.
Commissioner, let me jump in as well on point, just to reemphasize. I think what the public wants to hear is, while we might not know what these decisions are, they will be made locally. They will be made between TMH, Florida State, and you, and their expertise, pharmaceuticals in particular, and Tallahassee State College. But these decisions will be made locally as to the needs of this community. All right, Commissioner, on point?
Thank you. Well, sorry, we're talking to me? Okay, okay.
I mean, I'm sorry, you have the floor.
Thank you. Yeah, and I totally agree. And so, that's just why, you know, I think I would like us be much more careful when we publish things like this affiliation ensures that North Florida patients will no longer need to travel to Gainesville, Tampa, or Miami for advanced treatment. I think we need to be much more clear about what we mean when we say that. So, obviously, the members of the public, people who spoke here today, expressed concerns about undue state influence and the politicization of health care. What... And I know we've discussed it some. What assurances can we offer the community that there will be scientific independence?
Ms. President?
Well, we of Florida State have academic freedom and scientific independence already. Is there certainly... You could point to a few things that the state has weighed in on for the whole state of Florida, right? And so... But in general, we operate with full academic freedom to do what we want. We work hand in hand with the state and the legislative branch to talk to them about what our strategic initiatives look like and what we want to do. They're all wrapped up in what's good for the state, what's good for the students. So, you know, if there are, you know, laws that are implemented that we're required to follow, then the university is required to follow. I think it's important to underline that this partnership is not an ownership of TMH Healthcare. This is a completely separate, independent operating... This is about us, as you know well, owning the buildings and bringing resources to bear. So, it's... They will... TMH will operate, you know, completely independent, guided by the board and the senior management team, the CEO. So, that... I don't see, you know, anything that worries me. You know, we are partners with the state. We get 30, 45% of our budget from the state. And the thing that we get out of this is a tremendous partnership with the state, who cared deeply, the number-one state university system in the country for 10 years now. That's not by accident. That's because... Sorry if I sound preachy, Commissioner Porter. But it's about... I just think this, the general poe gets lost. You know, the amount of resources that the state pumps in from the taxpayers into Florida State University for the benefit of the state and the education and research of the state is very large. And the reason is because they want great things for the universities. They want us to do these jobs, and they're supporting us. And so, people often focus on some of the restrictions and some of the laws that maybe politically they don't agree with. But what I focus in on is other states where the state legislators are not contributing, and these places are practically private institutions. I can tell you, I came from a university that is very wealthy, and I have way more resources here than I did at my last institution to put toward hiring of great faculty and students. And so, you know, we have money set aside to hire physicians, scientists, that was given to us by the state. Why? Because they want to see improvement in already great health care. So, all I've heard from the state has been, again, cheering us on. Are there complexities, you know, that arise on occasion? I can guarantee you, as the president of Florida State, I encounter complexities from every... I got a lot of constituents, and all of them want us to do certain things. And the complexity of my job, just like with the city and the city commission, is trying to manage all of that and pushing the university forward. So, I just don't see what has been described in the newspapers and by some of those that are living, you know, that are worried about this issue. The asset is owned by the board trustees, not the board of governors, and that asset is managed by the university and the board of trustees. There is nobody that loves Florida State more than our board of trustees. They're all alums, they're all real smart people, like, you know, like you, that went to Florida State University. And they are all about protecting Florida State University. So, I feel very confident that this will be something that will be only beneficial. I just don't have any worry at all about that aspect.
Commissioner Richardson, on point.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mark, go ahead, and then Commissioner Richardson will come to you.
You know, looking for assurances, I think that one of the points of discussion through this entire journey has been keeping local ownership of the business and local governance in this. When we talk about TMH seats, we're really talking about community seats, because they represent the community. We have focused this structure to give us the best of both worlds, to give us active partnership, but to keep those decisions tied to this community. TMH and this structure is a partner, but is an independent 501(c)(3), and the decisions being made will be made for the benefit of this region. So, just as decisions are being made now, the same structure will exist moving forward in a partnership model. What that means is that the decisions that some people question about science, et cetera, those decisions will be made within our own community through this governance structure. I think that's one of the benefits of this partnership model.
Commissioner Richardson, on point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of what I've heard throughout the community since this was brought to their attention, of course, is the concern about political interference, especially from the current administration and state government here in the state of Florida. And I share that concern. I have served in the legislature, and I know that, you know, there are folk who like to put their hands into issues at the local level from time to time. And so, and I think what you all have heard today are suggestions... And, well, first of all, let me say this. I agree that the governance structure that is in place is a safeguard against that, one of the safeguards against that. You might have remembered hearing in the presentation earlier, though, that there are two issues that could be concerned... Could be considered there. One is the, what is it, 9/8 split and decisions maybe being based on one person being absent or two people being absent from a meeting. So, if you all could address that. And then, the other issue is including institutions like Florida A&amp;M and Tallahassee State College, Appalachian, to that board, and them having a seat and voting authority on the board.
President?
Yeah, I mean, first of all, you know, we're looking forward to seeing whether we can get support of the city and the city commission for this deal to help us improve health care. My opinion is that after that is done, I am completely open to the possibility of having a FAMU board seat. They already have a board seat on the current structure. I talked to the president, Mark and I have had that discussion. But we just, you know, we worked a long time to get this put together, so that will be sort of the way I look at it, post facto. But I already given those assurances, so we would be, you know, more than happy to do that, that's a surprise. The 9/8 thing is, with all... No, you didn't say it, but with all due respect, is not really a concern at all. We have all kinds of supermajority placements in the structure of the voting. The 9/8 is not going to make... I can't think of anything, any substance at all that would be decided by a 9/8 vote. Every single thing, capital projects, expansion beyond Tallahassee, investments, a strategic plan, appointments of any senior of the CEO, if Mark ever decided to... All of those things are supermajority votes. So, if one person's absent, that's just like a red herring. That doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. I don't know, Mark has an opinion on that, but that's...
And that's why I wanted that issue addressed in the public, because I keep hearing it over and over, and as you mentioned, it is a red herring. The other question that I would ask, you know, right now, we, meaning the city commission, approve appointments that are recommended to the board by TMH. There has been a suggestion that we broaden that if this... Or when this partnership is established, to include all of the board members. Would that be something you all would want to consider? As a safeguard to the political interference, that's the suggestion that's being made, that both the FSU and TMH board of trustees or board members be approved by the city commission.
From my point of view, that would be up to the city commission. That's certainly outside the scope of the MOU, Commissioner Richardson, that we have come up with. But, you know, it's in the same way that when we've had preliminary discussions with the city manager about compensation for the asset, you know, he makes it very, very clear to us that he does not have any authority, that his authority rests with the commission. And so, we also, all those questions like that that are outside the scope of the MOU, we would leave that to the commission, to the mayor, to make those decisions, and we would stand ready to, you know, go back to our groups and see whether that's possible or not.
Commissioner, that's an interesting point, and I think there's some legal issues involved with that as well that would have to be explored. I will say this, though. I think that there is a general commitment across the board to make sure we increase the level of communication within the community and what's going on moving forward as well, whether that means having, you know, quarterly reports twice a year, annual reports to the city commission, even the county commission for that matter, about the status of health care in our community, whatever the role is defined of how the city can also help support in the future, absolutely, through, you know, town halls, educational aspects, the whole nine yards. But when it comes to the official approval, that is something that I think the attorneys would need to dig in from a legal standpoint to say, because now you're redefining a specific role for the city in the process, if that's how we want to move forward. Commissioner Richardson, you still have the floor, and Commissioner Matlow?
I'm good.
Everybody's on point, Commissioner Porter. I'm coming back to you. I'm coming back to you, Commissioner Porter. On point, Commissioner Matlow?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just following up on those two points, the 9/8 board split. I'm encouraged that it seems like a supermajority is needed for most decisions, so I think for major decisions. So, I mean, I think in the interest of what we've heard from the community, if the amount of seats aren't really that important, then maybe something like, what, a 10, 7, 1 for FAMU, would that be amenable? Because you would still have enough board seats to not move forward with those major decisions?
You know, what we're looking for is representation. I think that's what we really are at this table to discuss. And it's important, I think, for everyone in this room, and it's certainly important for us at TMH, if we want to have a community-based organization, that community representatives basically have a majority number of seats. Not to say that everybody on the board is not going to be focused on the community, but you think about assignments and relationships and priorities. I mean, I think it's just a cleaner environment if we can make sure we have everybody focused on specifically the needs of the health system and how we serve. I think one of the points made in the presentation is that any board member, regardless of appointment, will have a fiduciary responsibility to that organization. And I'm sure there will be people that have conflicts, refusals, requirements, et cetera. But as we look ahead, we already... We have seats on the board. We don't currently assign them to individuals, but we are thoughtful about where those seats go. We have someone who, for example, is a professor at FAMU on there, by choice, because we recognize the value of that relationship. I think historically, we've always had someone from FSU, from the College of Medicine, on there, by choice, not by appointment, not by charter. I think those are the conversations that will continue to be held about thoughtful relationships. I think the relationships between all the academic parties can be largely addressed, not by board seats, honestly, but by partnership models, contracts, agreements, arrangements around research, bringing people to the table, creating this community dialogue. So, I think the focus of board seats defining those positions, I think sometimes it might get... The community focus might get lost in the board seats. I think it really is going to be based upon charter, the agreements, and the partnership models that we build in it. So, it's your decision. We trust your decisions at the end of the day. You know, we're coming forward with a model that we think makes sense, that we think will drive those improvements over time. This is a journey, we all recognize that. But I think what we have to also realize is that the platform that we're building upon is to make sure that we keep those decisions in our region, and a partnership model with FSU allows us to jointly advance health care across, not just South, North Florida, but across the entire Southeast.
Commissioner Matlow, real quick, before we jump back in. It is 11:32. We have advertised till noon. I want to be mindful of everyone's time and keep going with... If you're on point with your line, and then Commissioner Porter, I'm going to ask you to wrap up with a question or two, because we're still have the mayor pro tem and Commissioner Richardson in line to speak, and they haven't had a chance to answer any questions yet.
Okay.
Commissioner Matlow?
And then I'll just close on this one point. It sounds like it's open for negotiation still, and if the city commission would like to see a different board structure that more clearly reflects what we're hearing from our constituents, you're both open to that?
Well, you know, we're open to what the city commission would suggest to us. We did, and with all peace and love and due respect, we spent a long time talking about all this stuff, and so, we did find a place where we were able to agree. I have to tell you, board seats was a... I have to tell you, board seats was, you know, one of the issues that we, we discussed a lot about. So of course, this is an asset that's owned by the city, the city commission has to make the decision, and there are alternative suggestions, we would sort of, and I mean this again with all, I, we have to go back and try to get that deal done, right? And so that might open things up. It's not a, it's not a threat, it's just a, that's just a reality of, of the situation. But absolutely, the city commission has to make the decision about, about the transfer of the asset, the, if there's a, you know, what the cost is, and what about reinvestment, and, and all of that sort of stuff. If they, they have weigh-in on board seats, you know, I mean, we, we, we are, we are, we stand before you. You're the city commission in the city, that's your asset, so you have to tell us what to do. And if that makes sense for us, that, then we can, we'll do everything we can to get it done. If it doesn't make sense for us, then, you know, we'll say, well, maybe we could try to work something out or something like that. If that makes sense, I'd, you know.
Commissioner Porter for final comments before coming to the mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What is the plan for indigent care? Obviously, it's been discussed, but the need for indigent care is only going to get greater. And I think people really want to know what assurances, what guarantees we, the community has that that will remain a priority, that the care will improve, that the investment will increase in perpetuity, you know, not just for 10 years, but in perpetuity as a core mission of any, any partnership. Can someone speak to that?
Yeah. Again, I go back to why it's important for TMH to remain an independent 501(c)(3) with, with local governance. It's largely to that point, so we can assure that the charter, our charter always includes the indigent care piece. We have historically done that with, with a solid focus on, on that being a responsibility of the organization. I think you can write that into the, the structure of the game, I assume, I assume there are going to be conditions, you can write that in as a condition, that we will continue to serve that. I will tell you, you're not wrong about the question of, of, is it going to be a bigger burden? I think if you look at some of the cuts coming down the line in, in healthcare, and they're relatively significant, it's going to be a bigger burden on health systems like ours. One of the reasons why we look for a partnership like this, because it creates opportunities to bring additional revenues in to cover those costs. You know, they're talking about in, in the transition under the one big beautiful bill, a million more uninsured in the state of Florida, which many of those are going to be in this market. Someone's going to have to cover those costs, because people are, people who don't have insurance still get sick, they still show up. And that's one of the recognitions that we, we have, is that we've got to find ways to continue to provide that level of support. But I will tell you, we are, we remain committed to that. That's, that's who we are, that's what we are, that's what we've always been, and I am sure we will always be.
Yeah, you can chisel that in stone, because nothing will change. And the whole, and one of the major points of all this is that if, if you don't do this deal, then, you know, there is the risk of a for-profit coming in and trying to move into the space, and we lose the community aspect of the hospital. I guarantee you, that will impact indigent, indigent care. If we partner together, the opportunity for us to have more resources come to the table, then what that does is it frees up resources that can be applied to indigent care. So it's, that's, that's the logic behind this. Yeah, we're not, you know, it's not, we need to maintain the, the look and feel and the heart and soul of what Tallahassee Memorial Hospital is. If we, if we can't do that, then we failed. And so that's the reason I believe very strongly that this is the best pass, pathway forward. Like I said before, and I'm not, I'm not making this up or trying to, you know, pulling heartstrings or anything, this is where I grew up. And so providing healthcare to those people that don't have healthcare, that's a, that's a critical part of our mission for the community, and we would like to be helpful in that.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think that I've broken a record, I've never been so quiet for such a long period of time. My husband can attest to that. I wanted to just, first of all, I've been making notes here, in this partnership, and in partnerships, everyone brings their strong suit, they also bring their risk. And I think what we have here is, we have someone who is capable of providing the care for our community and have been doing it for a number of years, and doing a great job, hoping and wanting to do an even better job for more people. But we also have an entity over here who has the ability to bring funding at a greater level to help expand what is being done here. Now, I was very impressed, was it a year, two, a couple of years ago, when FSU Health broke ground at, at, at TMH? When I heard, I don't remember who it was who said that, they went to the lectures, went to leadership, state leadership, and told them that they needed $125 million, and they got it. This man, they got it. And they said, what else do you need? We need reoccurring dollars. Gave them an amount, they got it. So, you know, I don't know how your bank work, but I don't, I'm not able to just go in there as well as they know me. I can't just go in there and say, I need $125 million, and they stroke a check for it. And I'm, I'm saying that to say, in order to provide good healthcare, in order to provide a good service, we've got to have the ability to bring in research, we got to have the ability to infuse economic development in the community, so that, as, as you say, Mark, we can get these populations in the surrounding areas to be able to provide care, healthy North Florida was what we were striving for. So I see this partnership as an opportunity to provide even greater healthcare, but also not have to go out there and, and, you know, dig in the ground and try to find your own funding to keep advancing healthcare. So I, I see this as, as a partnership where folks are coming together to do some things together to make it happen. And I've heard quite a bit this morning, and I'm going to hit it again, I've heard it a, a lot, about this, this board governors. In the community, there seems to be, there, there is a great distrust, let's just call it what it is, the elephant in the room is there's a great distrust. There's a long history of what happened at FAMU's hospital, there's a long history of what, what happened at TMH, there's a long history of what happened at FSU. Let's just go ahead and, and understand that that's what we're feeling, that's what we're hearing. But I think what we, we can do, if we agree to do this, is that we can use what has happened in the past to help us make a better future by not repeating what has happened in the past. And a lot of ways we do that is by goodwill efforts. If the community is calling for a board seat for a particular organization, a particular group, Florida A&amp;M, Tallahassee State College, you have your, you have the ability to put them in the board seats that each of you have. You have nine and eight. One of the things that we do here at the city is, on some of our citizen review boards, we have seats that are designated for groups, so that it's in writing, it's there for perpetuity, because you guys are nice people, but you're not going to be there forever. And what we're trying to do is, we're trying to do something as generational that's going to last past us, and it's going to last past this current political climate. That's another fear, you know, we, we have nothing to fear but fear itself, and the fear is real, because we see what happens. No matter what we have written, no matter what has been, that they, they practiced for all of these years, a lot of those norms are now being, you know, they're, they're being rolled back, they're being knocked down, they're being ignored. And then we have to go in the court and try to get our rights back and get all these things back. So I understand that. But I think what we have the ability to do right here, right now, is to put something in place that's going to live past this political climate, and it's going to live past us. I'm not looking at this for myself, I'm looking at this for my great-grandchild that's on the way, that's going to be born at TMH, by the way, and, and, and her, her, her child. We've got to look beyond what's right here in front of us. And if it's as simple as saying, this seat would be designated for Florida A&amp;M, this seat would be designated for Tallahassee State College, why don't we just do it? Why, why can't we just be clear and, and just say, it can be done? And I've heard you say, it can be done, but I'm hearing a little hesitation, and I think the community needs to hear clearly that you're willing to do that, and whether, you know, we, the, we, the commission require it or not, I, I'd rather compliance than, than confrontation. So if we can agree to do that, and you don't have to do it right here, right now, this is not church where you got to come down the aisle and all that, but, but go back and talk about it. It's really important to this community that those things happen, and you've heard that many, many, many times, and I'm not the first one you heard it from. I also know that Dr. McCullough, President McCullough, that you and President Johnson met yesterday, and there was some discussion about the, the programs that Florida A&amp;M, Dr. Palm, you're already doing. And I appreciated that in your joint letter, you, you left the door open for expansion. We're always looking for expansion, because we only know what's going on right now, we don't know what's in the future. And FAMU is the owner of many patents and great research, and we definitely want to make sure that that continues to grow and be a part of what we're doing. There's a goal of reaching our, our one level, and all of these things can help us get there faster and sooner, and especially for the populations that sometimes are not a part of clinical trials. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm a diabetic, I have a diabetic pump. I didn't bring it in here today because it, it starts talking before I do, and I didn't want to be interrupted by it. And so, because I'm learning about this, these medications and the clinical trials that may not have been fully vetted on my culture, that's very important to me, because going forward, we need to make sure that all cultures have access to these clinical trials, all this research, because in my, and like you, President McCullough, I grew up not being able to just go to the doctor, where we, grandma had remedies that we had to do, and, and some of it included alcohol, not rubbing alcohol, that we had to do because we couldn't go to, we didn't have access to medical care. So I say all of that to say that I see this as an opportunity between Florida A&amp;M, TMH, and, and, and FSU, to be able to bring all of that to the table, so that all of us are represented, we're all included in, in good healthcare, because that's what's extending our lives, having access to healthcare. But you got to have access to capital to have access to healthcare. And I see that is, what's, what's, what can happen here. And I mentioned this, demonstrated funding source, demonstrated service, that's what's going to get us to the next level. Now, my concern is, the community I hear is confused, and I've, I've already talked to our city manager, that we need to take this information into the community. Everybody couldn't be here at nine o'clock this morning, we knew that, that's why they scheduled one for 6:00 PM. Everybody's not going to be able to do that one either. I am willing to go into our community and help us understand what this means. And I, I, I said this at the commission meeting, a year from now, I think it's going to be far too late, because while we're trying to get it together, that's, that's time we could have already been continuing to advance. And we know that the Florida legislature will be coming, they're, they're doing committee meetings now, but they'll be coming in in January. We need to be ready to ask for some additional funding to, to support this, to do this. And so we can't wait to do this. We, we need to have the funding that we need now to be able to do this. With your good credit, and, hey, I, I look, when you, when you started naming off that credit, I looked over at Jim, because Jim takes care of our credit, and Jim nodded.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was like, so while the credit is good, we need to go get some money, and, and let's, let's take our community to a, a healthier, healthier place. The region, North Florida, not just Leon County, not just Tallahassee, the region. Y'all know I'm from Gaston County, and I've always got an eye to Gaston County. And we know that poverty and a lack of access to healthcare is what causes some of the poverty that we see, not only in of surrounding counties, but here. So as we sit here, unless something's changed, there's a government shutdown that took place last night. That means that there are people out there who don't have access to healthcare. And what we need to do is to do what we need to do, to make sure that in these communities that we're serving, that we're going to be able to provide that healthcare. And I've always told you, my, my, my check boxes are, whether they can afford it or not, we need to make sure they get it. And I know the TMH, you've been doing that for a very long time, and, and from what I read, what you're currently doing is going to continue, yes? So there, I have no concern there. But what we, and, and the other thing was that I wanted to make sure that FAMU was going to be a part of what we do going forward. And so that's why I invited him to the table, because some people won't hear what we say, but they will see what we do, and will make assumptions and make conclusions based on that. That's why I wanted FAMU at the table, and I thank, thank my mayor for allowing that. And I also thank you for calling out for Tallahassee State College, if, if someone from Tallahassee State College was here to be here, because we know these partnerships already exist. So I am in support of moving to the next step, but I do want to make sure we take this in our, into our community, and I'm ready to do that. And thank you, Dr. McCullough, you offered to go, go with me, we're going to save you until we really, really need you. So thank you for that offer. And Mark, I know you and your folks are already in there doing some things, because I know you got your urgent care center right here, right off of Frenchtown, thank you for the work that you're doing. Let's go forward together to make this the best it can be for all of us. So do I have any questions? No, I just, I just told you what I need to have happen. I just added to my, my, my request, designated board seat, to give our community a sense of assurance that this thing will last past all of us. Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson?
On point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, you know, and all the questions that I had from the notes I've taken have been answered for the most part. This, this issue is personal to me. Mark, as you know, my two beautiful daughters were born at Tallahassee Memorial Hospital. I have recently had some health challenges that required me to seek healthcare from TMH, and it was the highest quality education, education, right.
You learned a lot.
The highest quality healthcare that my insurance would pay, but fortunately, my, my wife and I have health insurance, and those costs have been in the thousands of dollars since June of this year, thousands. But there are lots of people out there that can't afford that. And so, again, my concern is providing that care for those people who don't have insurance to pay those kind of costs for their healthcare. And then lastly, the, the whole issue of minority health. I, I have not heard discussion about that, and there are issues that are impacting the minority community that don't get addressed. I have high blood pressure, it's genetic, it runs in my family. But when I was diagnosed with high blood pressure, it took weeks, if not months, for my primary care physician and I to determine the proper combination of medications to control my blood pressure. Because one of the issues there is African-Americans don't participate in the clinical trials on these medications. And so there are issues there in terms of minority health that desperately need to be addressed, on issues like sickle cell. Sickle cell has been around for far too long for us not, at this point, to have a cure, or at least a, a way to treat sickle cell in, in, when it happens in families. And it, again, it's a disease that's genetic. And so I would certainly like to see us include in any discussion those issues, especially with the research, Dr. McCullum, that we're talking about, to address those issues that impact minorities in our community, African-Americans in particular. And then I'll, I'll end by asking, are there relationships already established with organizations that focus on those issues, like the Bond Community Health Center and Neighborhood Health Services? Do those relationships exist? If not, I would certainly like to see them be brought into the equation, because they're already doing it. But how we deal with minority health issues in our community?
Dr. Watson, can I think in a comment on this relationship? So real quick, because I know we're running out of time, and yes, the answer's yes. And if, if you've not been out to visit our Transition Center, which focuses on the underserved, which we, we started on Valentine's Day in 2011, that's how we can remember it, we put it on a great holiday. And so it's been in, for about 14 years. And so we do that, bond, neighborhood, others are also involved in that, we're very, very close and integrated with them, and we. We're very, very close and integrated with them, and they do a great job.
Could I just say something very quick?
Sure, Ms. President.
One of the things that's very interesting, first of all, we have one of the best rural health programs in the entire country. The amount of minority health work that goes on at FSU is far and away much better than any of the places that I've been. The other thing that's very interesting is I just very recently met with the Director of the National Institutes of Health. His expertise is in minority health. And he told me, he said, listen, there's a lot of misunderstanding about what's going on with funding and federal funding. He said, we're not going to fund things like the effect of racism on diabetes in Gaston County. He said, but we're going to fund the, you know, the health outcomes of minorities with diabetes in Gaston County. You know what I mean? So I just want to assure you that the federal government and the NIH Director, who's in charge of all this, is looking to do that. And that's an area of real strength for us.
Commissioner Matlow, bring it in for Delanda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few questions, though I think Commissioner Reporter's questions were very substantial and covered a lot of what I wanted to ask today. We may have to go a little over 12, but...
Is that okay with everybody, if we stay a little bit longer? Go ahead and hammer it out the deck.
First, let me just thank you both for being here. I think, you know, the future of medicine in our community is going to be guided through the leadership of Florida State and TMH, and happy to have the conversation today. And thank you for being willing to answer our questions. I think we have unanimous support for an academic medical center in Tallahassee. We didn't hear anything opposed to that in the community, from public speakers, or at this board. And I think that's fantastic, that we're moving in that direction. For me, as a city commissioner, you know, FSU has its interests, TMH has its interests, our interest is to the public, to protecting the public's assets. If we do decide to dispose of them, making sure we're getting a fair market value for what the public rightfully owns, because that's a big part of the public trust and what's been put on our shoulders to ensure that we protect as part of this conversation. So first point is, I don't, I'm not in support of selling the hospital. I understand that we're likely moving into a direction where the hospital will be sold. So I think looking at how we can make sure we get the best outcome and make sure we bring everybody to the table to do that. I don't think we're there yet. I think the conversations I've had in the community, what I've heard from our constituents via email, what I've heard from faith leaders even yesterday, is there's a lot of support for getting to a good deal, but what's being proposed in the MOU just isn't it. I want to say, so to unpack that for just a second, FSU and TMH already have partnerships that you're working together on, such as with the hospital in Panama City? Is that correct?
That's a part of this larger conversation.
Okay. Can we unpack that a little bit? President McCullough, the partnership for the TMH UF Health Center in Panama City, where is that in this process, and how is it related to this conversation? Or FSU Health, apologies.
Yeah, we, yes, we have had discussions about doing a partnership in Panama City Beach. We have an unfinished, as I understand it, MOU with Tallahassee Memorial Health Care. We have been moving in the direction that that's a deal that we are going to do. We have got authorization. For us to take out debt, we have to get authorization from the Board of Governors and the Bond Finance, whatever it's called.
And the Governor's Cabinet.
And the Governor's Cabinet. We have received all of those approvals, and so we have the authority to borrow $400 and...
$14 million.
$14 million to build a hospital in Panama City Beach. So those bonds have not been issued yet, but once we have a deal going forward, then that would be our intention to move forward with that. So that's where we are. We got focused on this deal, and that's what we've been focused on for the last, I don't know how many months. But all of those are sort of a part of a very large collective partnership between our two institutions.
Is moving forward with the hospital in Panama City dependent on the conversations we're having with the Tallahassee assets?
That's a very complicated question. If we could not have come to an agreement, then yes, those were tied together, from my perspect, that's my personal perspective.
Can you just explain? I'm just trying to figure out what happened and what's going on, you know, from my perspective and from what you've illustrated and from what I've gathered in newspaper articles and the city manager's inquiries, there was some amount of money from TMH that was spent to build this hospital with the anticipation that Florida State would enter into a partnership. Florida State has received approval for $400 million for funding of it, and I don't understand the relationship between that and why the city of Tallahassee's involvement is needed for that to move forward.
Well, let me just give you a little bit of background, which I think all of y'all have, but let me just put it in a nutshell. The relationship in Panama City is actually a three-part relationship. It's with the Saint Joe, they're a land development company, they're building a large senior living community over there. They invited health systems to engage with them around creating a health platform largely for that, but it's turned into something more than just for that community, it's for the larger Panama City, Panama City Beach community. We, as in TMH, were able to secure that relationship and worked with and then President Thrasher to create a partnership around an FSU health identity. As we looked at doing that, there were some time requirements that were in place, still in place as a part of the agreement with Saint Joe, to deliver a hospital to that community by a set date. So as we were looking for financing vehicles, the one that is by far the better financing vehicle is through a relationship with FSU. FSU would go secure a bond, TMH would lease the facility back from FSU to own. We would own and operate the facility as a, they would own the asset. We would be basically what we are here. We would be the owner of the business and an owner and a manager of the organization. As we started moving forward with that, of course, that required us to get into a lease relationship. That's what we were managing and negotiating through the part of this deal. We went ahead and started the construction, recognizing that we had a time limitation, a time requirement to deliver a hospital to Saint Joe, and the lease was not yet done. So TMH has been financing the construction of that with the anticipation that once the lease is in place, then the bond will go forward, the bond will go forward, and then through those bond funds, we will get paid back what we have already invested into that facility, and then we'll move forward with that, with the basically lease operator relationship moving forward. That's been connected through all of this, largely from timing, and it has been a part of the discussion. I don't think there's any way around stating that. That has been a part of the conversation back and forth, because if we're going to have a relationship over there, does that mean we have a relationship here? Can we break the two apart? It's been a very complex conversation. But again, I go back to where we've always intended to go, which is at this organization, we've always wanted to have a partnership with FSU. That's been a part of our strategic directive since going back to 2008, with milestones along the way. So timing-wise, some complexities that related to bringing these together, but we think under this structure, we are where we need to be on both Panama City and Tallahassee. So trying to bring it together. The answer is yes, they are all linked up, timing-wise.
Okay. And has there been any delay on FSU's part, or Mr. McCullough, for its obligations to fund the hospital in Panama City during the ongoing negotiations with TMH for our hospital here? Or are these on two separate tracks? You said that they were interconnected.
Yeah, they are interconnected. I mean, I won't get into all the complexities of the issuing of the debt and related to the city-owned lease and the city having the approval over whether they could borrow money related to Panama City Beach and all that, that's beyond my brainpower. But there are some interrelations on that. We were moving forward, as Mark can tell you, we were moving forward on the Panama City Beach deal, and then this Tallahassee, when we put the Tallahassee piece, we had had a lot of discussions about moving beyond a transactional relationship with Tallahassee. It's something that, you know, has been a vision of Mark, and we were interested in doing that. But there was a lot of complexity going on at the time within Tallahassee, and so we had focused all of our attention on Panama City Beach. As we focused our attention on Panama City Beach, then there was this, you know the history, there was the complexity of Panama City Beach and the approval of the city commission and all that stuff. Then there was this notion about us acquiring the assets from the city. Then we focused all our attention back on Tallahassee, although the MOU is still in place and we're waiting for just legal response from Tallahassee Memorial Health Care. But we're pretty far along in that. I mean, basically, the MOU is almost done. And then we started working through this piece. And then, as, you know, in all honesty, this is a business deal, right? I mean, we're talking about $414 million of risk capital for Florida State University as a fiduciary. I have to make sure that that's a good decision on our part. And so if this thing would have gone completely south, and we were, you know, disagreeing on every point, then I found, my personal opinion is that would have made Panama City a much more complicated situation for us to pull off, especially my board might not be that interested in us putting that risk capital if we couldn't get the Tallahassee Memorial Hospital. So I'm giving you the straightforwardest answer as I can give you on this.
Mr. President, if I may add just a little bit, that Panama City Beach and Tallahassee are connected because they're part of the north, they're part of the North Florida healthcare system. And as we envision an academic health center for our region and our residents, it has to be more than a 100-bed hospital in Panama City Beach. It has to be, this is, I call it the 800-bed gorilla, because there's 800 beds. And I think that it's a really important connection to make sure that we're able to provide the care for the region and the people who need it.
And I would just layer on, too. I don't want to get into the complexities that the president mentioned, but from a financing standpoint and from a funds flow standpoint, the two things are connected. So I think TMH would probably be better in position. But, you know, Panama City Beach is dependent upon resources in Tallahassee, especially in the beginning, and one day in time, Panama City Beach may help Tallahassee. So the two systems are interconnected.
Okay. And so the agreement with the TMH board for this MOU, that was passed unanimously by the board? Okay.
Yes.
And the board, some of the board is here? It was passed unanimously, Ms. Bracha? Do you mind speaking into the mic? I just have a couple of questions.
Madam Chair, thank you for joining us.
They pull you back in.
Good to see you.
Thank you for your time. I'm just trying to make sure I have an understanding of this. Are you and the TMH board on board with an academic medical center?
Always have been since I've been on the board. This is my sixth year on the board, but as Mark O'Brien pointed out, these have been discussions that have been happening since 2008, I think. And interestingly enough, we started, I think, those conversations. I think Mark started those conversations from TMH's perspective with FSU. So yeah, we're 100% on board with the concept of an academic medical center, and the MOU did pass unanimously, yes.
Madam Chair, would you introduce yourself for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Sally Bradshaw, and I live at 1345 Dupont Road in Gaston County in Havana.
And you are the current chair of the board.
I just, last night at midnight, was the, yeah, I'm still on the board, but yes, my term unfortunately ended at midnight last night.
You had a shutdown?
Who's counting the minutes?
Commissioner Matlow, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we've had a robust conversation on the board split, the 9-8. We've heard from members of the community, there's op-eds, we've seen around this table the desire for maybe to include FAMU or more locally controlled seats. So this unanimous support by the TMH board, I mean, is that, is the 9-8 something that the board was enthusiastic about?
I was listening to President McCullough earlier talk about how this decision was hammered out, and I think you can probably see the nails in my forehead still from the last seven or eight months of our conversation. That's the way negotiations go. That's the nature of the beast. I think there were parts of the agreement we were very excited about, and there are parts of the agreement that we had concerns about, and I think that's probably true of FSU as well. That's the way this works. We are a community hospital, as everyone here knows, and we're a nonprofit. We're not a for-profit hospital, and that means our margins are very narrow, 1%, 1.5%, 2%. And so we have a fiduciary obligation to the community and the half a million patients that are served every year by the hospital, as well as the 6,000 healthcare professionals that work there. And there was risk of losing funding in Panama City, and that was something that was discussed for a number of months with everybody who was involved in the negotiations. And I think, at the end of the day, we wanted to move the conversations forward and continue the discussions, and we could not risk the financial loss to not move forward. And so I don't know if that answers your question, but I would say it was a robust discussion and conversation, and the board did vote unanimously because we wanted to continue the conversations and move to the definitive agreement stage of this.
Okay. So do you think, is it your, did the board feel pressure because FSU had the ability to pull out of Panama City from that, I guess, non-binding agreement that they had to fund the Panama City Hospital to move forward with the city of Tallahassee?
Well, not all the board is here. Some board members are here, and I don't want to speak to the entire board. I think that was a concern, yes.
Okay, okay.
One point real quick, Mr. Clark, you wanted to jump in?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Matlow, I just wanted to make sure, because you said more locally controlled seats. I just want to make sure that the commission understands that the 17 board members, 75% of them have to come from Leon, our contiguous county, and seven of them have to be physicians. So just want to make sure that everybody understood that.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Bracha. Just a few follow-ups. So when we say locally controlled, you know, I think what our constituents mean is more like the structure we have now, of not just local members of our community that are longstanding members of our community, serving on the board in its entirety, but also local government approval of those board members. It's checks and balances. And while I understand President McCullough, I think what y'all are trying to do is great. I think y'all are great people. I think what you're doing is for the right reasons, but what's being proposed doesn't give us local protection. I mean, we've seen it in other state universities. The governor does have control to exert pressure. He does have control to remove a university president if things below him aren't going in the direction that we want to see. I mean, we saw this in the UF presidential search. We saw it at New College. We even saw it at FAMU of how much that political pressure is weighing on the academic community. So I understand you don't feel those pressures right now, and the reason you're moving forward is in the benefit of public health, and I respect that and I appreciate that. But when we have an asset that's owned by locals, a billion dollars, we have a duty to protect that. So like I said, I would rather not sell it, but there's many ways that we can protect that. One is by the board's structure and making sure that the board we put in place isn't easily subject to the whims of state government and the governor. I think that's the easiest way, and I think we can do that with board seats. I think Commissioner Richardson made an excellent point. No matter what the structure that moves forward with FSU and TMH appointees, still have the city commission vote to approve those. So then, if any shenanigans ever do happen, when I'm gone, you're gone, we're all gone from state governor, at least we know our local elected officials provide a check to who's coming down the pipeline to operate our facility. I think that makes complete sense. I think we, as it was stated earlier, we need fair market value if it's going to be transferred away from the city of Tallahassee. Absent fair market value, we need an agreement that we, the structure doesn't matter as much, as long as if we maintain ownership. And so just one question on that, Madam Attorney or Mr. Manager, Commissioner Reporter mentioned the real estate policy earlier. We own title to the building and the assets. Is there a contractual obligation that we can't sell those, as the manager stated? Is there a contractual obligation that we can't sell those, as the manager stated?
A contractual obligation that we cannot sell them?
Can we not sell the hospital and then transfer the lease to a new owner?
Mr. Manager and madam attorney?
I'm not sure I understand your question, Commissioner. Can you ask it again? I'm sorry. You're saying can we sell and transfer?
The manager- Mr. Manager, I think so.
Madam Attorney, I think this will help. I think what the commissioner is asking is under the current arrangement, we cannot. We have a lease arrangement with Tallahassee Memorial. In the absence of a change with that lease arrangement, we cannot sell those assets.
Right.
So in this process, it would involve a dissolution of that lease and some agreement with FSU to transfer the assets. I think someone mentioned this earlier, in my estimation, the sequencing of that would all be conditioned upon a final agreement between TMH and FSU. So there's some steps that we would have to go through. But as long as the existing lease is in place with TMH, we cannot sell those assets. Madam Attorney, I think that's the point.
Unless we sold them subject to the lease.
That's my question.
Right. We can transfer the assets.
Right.
Right. But the lease remains intact.
That's correct.
That's correct. We cannot sell them out from under TMH.
That's the question I'm asking. Is there a prohibition in the lease to sell this real estate, or would the lease just be transferable to a new owner? In the event, we're here with Florida State today, but the event, Mayo was interested, or if we went to RFP to see what other entities were interested in acquisition, how does the TMH lease fall into that?
I think anything, we can't sell out from under the lease. So anything that we would do would have to be done subject to the lease and the current terms of the lease, including the length of the lease.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well.
Mr. Mayor. Sure. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Commissioner Matlow, you mentioned something about the city approving board members. The way, from what I'm hearing, is that if we are to, if the citizens are to be compensated for transferring this asset, we're also transferring any rights of approval of any operation along with that. So I would not, it's like me selling my house, but then I got the people who bought it, now I got to get my approval to change the light bulb. To me, that's a little much. If we're going to transfer at compensation an asset, then we also transfer is the rights for them to operate as they choose to and not come back to the city for approval because the city is now being, has been compensated, the citizens have been compensated. So I'm hoping that we're clear on that, because, you know, you can't sell it and then continue to control it. And I've been on the board since 2018, and the only thing that we've done with TMH is, other than collect the dollar a year, is to vote to approve or not approve board members. So that's the level of control that we've had. So I'm hoping that we clear that up.
Mr. Mayor, one point.
One point. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. I'm not sure we, I mean, that that's true. That might be your position as far as whether we should or should not, but I don't think we have received a legal opinion whether or not that is possible or legal.
Sure.
I would have to look into that. I'm not sure what that could look like or how that could work. It's not something that I was apprised of before. So I don't know the sort of legal question to it. I agree it probably is a policy.
And you're right. I don't know the legal question either. It's just logical to me, but let's make it legal.
All right. Commissioner Matlow, you want to bring it in for Orlando?
Yes, sir. Thank you. And on that point, that's what negotiations are about. I mean, it's clear we're far away from, I think, a done deal here. I think there's too many. I mean, we have open legal questions, we have open community questions, we have the board structure that still needs to be considered, how we're going to maintain the local control of it. I don't disagree, Mayor Pro Tem, at full market value, we don't really have a lot to ask for. And if that's what's meant to come back, full market value of near a billion dollars is what we've been told it's worth, then I would withdraw that point and say we don't need any oversight of it, because, I mean, a billion dollars can do tremendous good for the public interest in Tallahassee when we look at the future of affordable housing, the future of healthcare, the future of infrastructure. We could definitely use the money and would be open and willing for that. But in the event that we're looking for a deal that is less than that, I think we do have the ability to continue to have that local oversight over the board, and I think it provides a very important check. So I think where we need to move forward first is just to get a fair market appraisal of the property to be able to continue this conversation at a later date. So I'll make a motion that we direct city manager to, in accordance with our real estate policy, to seek out two appraisals for the property.
Second.
Motion on the table, and there's a second on the table. Mayor Pro Tem for comment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Matlow, I feel your spirit, but I can't support it. One, we're putting in the atmosphere a figure that we have nothing to base it on. It could be more, it could be less. Commissioner Porter, I hear you. But I think that our instruction to the city manager should be that we follow the process that is already in place, that we have set forth, and that we move forward with the next public hearing. In the meantime, he'll do what he said in the beginning. They will work towards whatever it is that they need to do to get the fair market value and to determine what these other outstanding issues are, questions answered, community engagement, all these things, so that at the next public hearing, we will come to the table with more information. But I don't like misleading the public. I have no idea what this fair market value of this hospital is to my heart and to my family, and my husband's retired from there, and a lot of my family members. It's worth more than a billion dollars, but that may not be the fair market value. We need to make sure that we get that, so that we get the best and highest for our residents, our citizens, so that those dollars can be used to continue to make our community better. While they continue to make healthcare better and available, we continue to make our community better. So I don't want to put a billion dollars out there, and it's more than that, could be less than it, I don't know. That's what negotiations are for, once you get the fair market value. So I think that I can't support that motion for those reasons.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, I'm not declaring it worth a billion dollars. I'm just using the available information that we received during the ongoing negotiation process about the likely value. But my motion is not to declare the value, but to seek independent certified appraisals per our real estate policy, and that would give us all clarity on the true value of this property.
Commissioner Richardson. It was my understanding going forward, those were the kind of issues that the city manager was going to address. I don't know that it takes a motion limited to just that, because there are other issues that will need to be hashed out as we go forward, and the fair market value of the property is one of those.
So I'm going to weigh in now and say, first of all, this has been an absolutely, we do have a motion on the table. We have had an incredible conversation. On a personal note, Mark, I want to thank you for your leadership. You have done a yeoman's job, and it's not always been easy with me, and I realize that. Mr. President, I want to thank you for your leadership, and it hasn't always been easy with me, and I appreciate you for that. Both teams have done a tremendous job. I want you to know that you have the utmost gratitude from this commission for everything that you do and continue to do. I want to thank the board, madam chair, and members that are here. We are all friends. Thank you for digging in, rolling up your sleeves, and really bringing this particular issue to light that has been a strategic priority of TMH for decades. I want to thank Vice President Palm for being here, representing Florida State, and for your full endorsement on behalf of the president of, I'm sorry?
You said representing Florida State.
We all got our universal.
No, Florida A&amp;M. Sorry. It's been three and a half hours here. I'm sorry, Vice President. I think you understand what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
And to have the full endorsement of the president of FAMU speaks volumes as well. And I want to thank President Murdaugh and Tallahassee State College, everything that they have done as well to support this plan. We are at a very unique situation where we have all the experts, and we have all the players, and we have all the people that are playing significant roles in the institutions at the table unanimously agreeing with how to move forward. I support this as well. I am going to make a substitute motion, which is the recommended action, including that the manager move forward in negotiating the payment structure to the city of Tallahassee in negotiation with Florida State to go ahead and give the formal direction. I'm going to ask you to make sure I'm not forgetting anything in this particular motion. But I love where we are. I love where we're going, and the future is bright in healthcare, not only in Tallahassee, Leon County, but across all of Florida in regards to FSU health. Mr. Manager, help me if I have missed anything to put a proper substitute motion on the table.
That motion is fine.
All right. And are we clear with direction? There's a second by Commissioner Richardson. Okay. Commissioner Matlow, on the substitute motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And for clarity, what value is the city manager negotiating based on?
What is going to be the process, Mr. Manager? We've left it broad for you to identify how you were going to move forward with the negotiations with Florida State.
Yes, sir. I think that is broad. I think that's helpful, because there has to be some agreement between, in this case, FSU and the city of what may make sense. Now, clearly, that will be with some basis. Fair market value is very difficult to determine in this case, understanding that, but how the structure works, that's what we would bring forward to you. So that would actually give you something to work from. I think Kyle, he's pretty tough, but I think we'll hold our own with Kyle. I think we understand the nature of it, so we'll put our heads together and bring forth what we think makes the most sense. We'll describe the basis for that and how that translates to monetary compensation for the city's residents. I indicated earlier in my comments that, in my opinion, I believe that that is in a future revenue stream as opposed to a lump sum of money, keeping in mind that that lump sum of money in itself, in theory, would place a burden on the system that we're trying to encourage to flourish. So I think the direction is fine. We'll make our best effort. We'll give that to you for consideration, and so I think that would be our approach, sir.
Okay. Hold on. Commissioner Matlow still has it on point.
And a follow-up. So is your motion silent on the board structure and reassessing that and including additional positions for FAMU or other local partners?
The recommended action does not specifically address that, while at the same time it acknowledges incredible conversations going on between the president of FAMU, the president of Florida State, Tallahassee Memorial Healthcare, the city of Tallahassee. I think that we have been told, and it has been endorsed, that this is the process to move forward, and those conversations will continue. Quite honestly, I have not had the opportunity to sit down with the president of FAMU to discuss this issue, and I am not going to box this commission in with any particular vote until I have had that conversation as well. What we have is a ringing endorsement from FAMU, both in presence and on paper, of what is before us today, along with Florida State, TMH, and I endorse it as well. I've got Commissioner Porter, and then coming back, Commissioner, the mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, is there something, I mean, other than this being a hospital, I mean, what is, what do you mean when you say this is complicated to get a fair market value on?
I think the easiest way to get a fair market value of any business is if you're selling the business. And there are a number of methods that hospitals are valued based on, but that would be selling the entirety and the control and the operation of the business. In this case, that's not what we're talking about. So you have to take that into account. You have to consider the current lease. You consider we're the title holder to the assets described on the main campus, but many of those assets have debt associated with them that TMH is currently obligated to. Their contents, their tangible property contents that have to be estimated, TMH is not like other entities, so that's, you know, a little more complex. So all of those things have to be taken into consideration. The nature of what you're actually selling, and it's not the business, it's not the going concern, how it's encumbered with maybe a lease or how it may be impacted in the future, and then what's the current state of those assets? What's the depreciated state? Keep in mind, the city built the hospital in 1956. I think we've all been to the hospital. We know where that section of the hospital is. But there's so many more things that have been added over the years that have been added by TMH, and so all of that has to be taken into consideration in terms of stated assets, the depreciated level of the assets, what's the actual business worth? We're not selling the business. And so as you take into account that, that impacts the valuation. There are firms in the United States that do this, not a lot, and those are the factors that would be considered. And then, as I've said, once you have that value or a range of values, whatever that happens to be, how do you actually structure an arrangement? Is it based on that value? Is it based on a different method that we believe in doors to the betterment of the citizens? Those are the things, now, of course, we've been thinking about this. I've been thinking about this. This is my background. I don't practice in healthcare, but it's what we do. We're at that moment where we've got to begin that deeper analysis. So that's, all of those things have to be taken into consideration to determine worth, and then practical application of, you know, what's in the best interest of the citizens and the healthcare system itself. So that's what we would do moving forward.
For posture, I've made a substitute motion, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. City Manager. I think the complexity is precisely why I would feel more comfortable waiting until we have an appraisal before we move forward. So I can't support this motion while I support us moving forward, I just cannot support this motion. I think we need to begin with an appraisal. It sounds like that's something that could take a little bit of time to get if so few people do it, and if there is so much complexity. It also sounds like we need to give, we need to understand more about where we're even going so that we can direct what that appraisal actually looks like. So I just don't feel comfortable moving forward at this time with the motion that's on the table.
Thank you. Commissioner Matlow.
Yes, and final comment. I agree with Commissioner Porter. Mr. Manager, I really didn't hear an explanation of how you're going to determine value. I understand it's complicated, but we need a clear direction that either we're giving to the manager to determine value or how he's going to bring it back. And as a business owner, it's not complicated. It's the value of the real property, it's the value of the real estate, and it's the value of the tangible assets that we have ownership of. We understand we don't own the business, we don't understand those other complexities, but we do understand what we have title to, and that can have a real concrete value that we can assign to it, and we can bring in professionals to find that amount. And that's what I'm looking for, because I'm not interested in an arbitrary number or negotiation and happening that's not based on, again, the fair market value of the property.
I'm glad it is that simple. We'll be able to get an answer sooner than later then. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, I just want, for the public who's listening, I want to clarify the future, I think you said, future funding stream as opposed to a lump sum, and I want to give my definition, and you tell me if I'm right. Whatever that lump sum about would be, would be the burden of them having to just drop that lump sum, and then the burden of you having to try to figure out how to spend it in a year. But if we get it over a period of time, then we're able to use it for services or products that we use here in the city of Tallahassee for the city residents. So how close am I to that definition?
Yes, ma'am. I think that captures it.
All right. We have a substitute motion on the table made by the mayor, seconded by Commissioner Richardson for recommended action as by recommended by the staff with a payment structure component. Once again, thank you all for joining us today. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Nay. And it passes three to two with Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Porter in dissent. Thank you. We are adjourned.
Great job, Mayor.